Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We were doing some quick photos. We will... Good morning. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is March 18, 2025. We'll start with a salute to the flag. And if our clerk, Ms. Jan Galassini, could lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark.
President.
Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andriola is absent. County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy DA Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a court.
Thank you so much. We'll now move into our invocation with Rajan Zed, the President of the Universal Society of Hinduism. Welcome.
Starting with Gayatri mantra, considered the most sacred mantra of Hinduism, I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures as old as 1500 BCE. May all rise, please. Om. Bhurbhah swaha, tattvitur vare nam, vargo devasya dimahi, yo yona prachodayat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya, tamso ma jyotir gamya, mriti or mamrata gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada sakta statham karyam karma samachara, sakto haa charn karma, bharma bhavati pursha, karma ne vahisam siddhi mastita jnaka dhyaya, lokasangrayha me vapi, sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navabtu, saha nobnaktu, saha viryan karba bahai, jasvi nava dita mastu, ma vidvisha bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samniva akuti, samnahirdhyaniva, samnamastuvomano, yatha vasusa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And now we'll move into public comment. Madam Clerk.
All right. Item four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person. It may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that remain to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment, will only be available at Incline Village for this meeting. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Terry Brooks, followed by Cindy Banson.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address following politics to health care when it comes to homelessness. Some politicians supported disability insurance back in 1956, but others did not support it, creating a few conflicts. Then in 1965, some politicians supported Medicare, which helped a lot of elderly people to receive a lot of care. But there were some politicians who did not support Medicare, for the rich to help support the elderly they didn't think was fair. And in 1965, some politicians supported Medicaid, which helped a lot of poor people to receive a lot of aid. But there were some politicians who did not support Medicaid. They did not want the poor to receive something for which they had not paid. Then more recently came ACA, the Affordable Care Act, which some politicians backed while other politicians attacked. People who are elderly are more susceptible to illness, as are people who are poor or people who are homeless. Some say our health care system is biased against the elderly and the poor, while others say the federal government should not help the elderly or the poor. When the elderly and the poor are sick and about to die, and some politicians do not want to help them, I have to wonder why. Everyone has a right to live and do so in good health, even if they're old or poor, regardless of lack of wealth. If someone does not want to help someone else who is in need, why won't they help them? Is it because of their greed? Maybe it's because they do not want such people to help make the selection when it comes time to vote in the next election. I would like to thank you all for putting up and listening with me today, and I look forward to coming back when I have even more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Good to see you.
Cindy Banson, followed by Tara DeCieres.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your service to the community. You're much appreciated. I'm here to talk about libraries. I noticed in the invocation that he talked about leading us into the light, and I believe that is one of the tasks of libraries. Libraries are for everyone, a place to go on a hot day or cold day, a place to go with your family, grandmas and little kids that they bring, helping young moms. It's just an equalizer. Librarians are dedicated, and they are individuals who have taken their own time and invested their money in educating themselves so that they can share that with others. They're definitely good people who want the best for their constituents, the people, the patrons who come to their place. They just want to share their knowledge. So, in a world where the gaps are widening between rich and poor, this is one of the equalizers, and I hope that you'll consider funding libraries as well as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara DeCieres, followed by Sandy Tibbet.
Hi, my name is Tara Decatos, and I'm here to speak to you again about libraries and the library budget. And this is the third time I've come to speak, and it's because honestly, I don't know what I would have done without the library system when my kids were little. That is where we spent our time, and the librarians were really important in raising my kids. So I'm here again. There's been a new development. Last Friday, the administration signed an executive order to eliminate the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is the only federal agency for America's libraries. The AMLS provides grants to states and to libraries, including the grant that allowed the Washoe County library system to buy the bookmobile. With the elimination of this source of federal funding, it becomes even more important for the county to fully fund the libraries. We realize that the county budget outlook for the upcoming fiscal year is not rosy, but in some ways that makes it even more essential to fund libraries, which represent a relatively small part of the overall budget, but provide a huge return on investment. Some of the greatest needs in our community are for services for unhoused people, services for seniors, and services for kids. And the library system has demonstrated success in all of these areas. If you go into one of our great libraries on any day this week, you'll find unhoused people there getting out of the cold. You'll find librarians helping seniors access technology, and you'll also see kids who are there for the Kids Cafe, which is provided in partnership with the Food Bank. In all of these cases, you're going to see trained library staff helping people access services. It would be a terrible waste if these librarians lose their jobs and we lose their expertise and their dedication to our community. The Washoe County library system has already built the infrastructure and trained the staff to provide these essential community services, and so it will greatly benefit all the residents of Washoe County to keep these services going without interruption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Tibbet, followed by DeAndre Burleson.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's been a while. I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Clark, for last week's town hall meeting. It was very informative. I learned about the Senate Bill 319, which was very eye-opening. So today, I am here to urge this board to oppose SB 319, which is a bill from Senators Daley and Taylor. If you look at it closely, it's a financial drain with no limits. It's not just a bill, but a burden on all of us. SB 319 lets this board, with Reno and Sparks, merge fire services into a county district. It promises efficiency but delivers an unfunded mandate with unchecked taxing power. Section 8 of the bill allows limitless property assessments, hiking rates as costs rise. It is a hidden tax trap that will hit our residents the hardest. If you dig deeper, the bill is a backdoor bailout for Reno and Sparks Fire Departments, funded by our taxes. Reno's budgeting has been murky, murky for years, unlike Truckee Meadows or North Lake Tahoe's Clarity. They do it much better. Under this bill, you're directed to create a new board with two of the members from this body, plus two from each city, requiring a majority vote and agreement from every group for any action. This setup risks gridlock. It erodes your control and prioritizes urban needs over rural communities. The challenges just keep stacking up. Merging mismatched departments could weaken firefighting. The bill ignores labor contracts, leaving staffing costs unclear. Truckee Meadows residents face double taxation by having to pay the old debts while funding the new district. And per Section 11, if this fails, we're still liable. We can do better by boosting mutual aid, by seeking state funding, and by keeping control or control local. So SB 319 is a risky, expensive overreach that burdens taxpayers to fix the city's shortfalls. So I'm asking you to reject this bill and champion a solution that protects our safety, finances, and local voice. I also wanted to talk about what's happening in my part of the county. I live in District 5, off of Old Virginia Highway, Horizon Hills. We have been surrounded by warehouses, which is not bad. It backs up to Beavine. I had multiple pictures, but I could only get one to print out. This is just a small sample of what's happening out there. What's really concerning is that we have an access road that was put in by the landscapers. The trees are disappearing. They're cutting them down, and they're dragging them out. And it's costing thousands, I'm sure, and it's probably happening all over the county. So I'll send you those pictures that I have by email this afternoon. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. DeAndre Burleson, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning. My name is DeAndre Burleson, RTC ID number 20166, Nevada ID number 0806054026. I'm homeless. My name is DeAndre Burleson. I have an active case with the Reno Municipal Court of Court Case Number 24CR-16132 for sitting or lying in a prohibited doorway. I am currently waiting for, I'm assuming, my Reno Housing Authority, client number I received some correspondence in regards to this, so I'm thinking that this is a progression of events to receive my housing authority. I would like to submit some Motel 6 records from the current month of March for public record for livestock across the street, which should include medical records from Northern Nevada Hopes. I'd like to submit social security verification letter and one or two extra other things that has occurred since I've been homeless. Also, I'd like to say that I have no food, no place to sleep, I'm violating in the night. I am LGBT state registered with the state of Nevada. Hate crimes daily, such as I had sexual intimacy with your mom. Hope you look at me as your father, things of that nature. But I guess I'll elaborate at a later time what that is really about. No money to wash clothes, no money to take care of myself. My Nevada EBT card number is 5077159915609953. I receive $23 a month. Just want to share that. And my current Wells Fargo account is at $5. So, that's it. So I guess I would like to submit these for public record. And I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we've been... Sorry, real quick. I think we've been trying to connect you with services, sir, and we'll see what we can do to help you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry.
Penny Brock, followed by John Belfort.
Thank you.
Oh, are you going to hand those out?
I am, right now.
Oh, thank you, Jen. Thank you. Penny Brock, for the record, you'll be getting a copy of this. Last week, the county commission passed the radical climate change. I don't know what you call it. You can't pass a bill. I guess you call it a plan, Climate Action Plan, with 126 plans. You were told there is no funding for it coming out of our budget. I do take issue with that. The Sustainability Department has at least two employees that's coming out of the budget. He told you that he would be getting federal funds, private funds, local funds, or grants. However, the EPA is cutting off the funding for climate change. So where is the funding going to come from? You have a budget meeting next week. Is that going to be in the budget to fund the Climate Action Plan? We didn't elect the Sustainability Manager. The voters of Washoe County and across America overwhelmingly elected Donald J. Trump as president, and one of the reasons was because he promised to get rid of the radical climate change agenda that was putting an undue burden on Americans, on business, and on taxes. President Trump has kept his promise. He appointed Lee Zeldin as the Secretary of EPA. They're keeping their promise. As you can see, the EPA has ended the Green New Deal. The Trump administration to cut EPA environmental justice, and that's in the plan that you passed last week, environmental justice. EPA administrator to overhaul Obama-era binding on greenhouse gases, a major deregulatory move. This is a huge part of your new Climate Action Plan. You might be in trouble with the EPA, because they've also said they want reports of anything on the local level that's continuing with the radical Obama-Biden Climate Action Plan. Biden's woke green agenda on the chopping block as EPA announces most consequential day of deregulation. Trump EPA begins rolling back Biden EV mandate in biggest day of deregulation in American history. EPA chief Zeldin moves to clear massive Biden-era agency backlog to improve air quality faster. Trump EPA set to reverse Biden's crackdown on cool-fired power plants and lifeline to industry. We'll be interested to know next week how you plan to fund your Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. John Belfort.
Yes, my name is John Belfort. I'm here to give an update about my $5 million claim against Washoe County. There's also another $5 million claim by Mr. Jeffrey Wilson against Washoe County. When you... Now, what we're experiencing is Deputy District Attorney Canderas is starting to pick and choose which FOIA's she answers. I'm not sure the legality of that, but just doesn't seem quite right. The other thing is, my county commissioner, Janine Herman, who I sought help from, failed to disclose her conflict of interest during the 211-acre subdivision in the directly adjacent property to mine, with rubber stamp sign-offs by the fire department, despite complaints by us and documentation that there is emergency services impeded access to our area, but yet they signed off. All around me, while I'm being prosecuted and persecuted by code enforcement, there are at least three properties surrounding mine that are being given the green light to do whatever they want. There's basically a structure, tiny house cabin, which is what I paid Washoe County $10,000 for in permits, plus another 10 in plans and other expenses. They just built it, and it's just there. So they basically did what I paid you guys for, for free, with no plans or permits. Washoe County's doing nothing about it. And Alexis Hill, I know you've been sent all this stuff about Wilcox Ranch. And I'd like to also announce at this point, we've set up a YouTube account, YouTube channel, Wilcox Ranch POA Exposed, and you're all on it. You're all named in there. We got your pictures on there. So, all I wanted was my building permits, extensions that I was promised, and now you guys got the fight of your life, because I am not giving up on this. I believe there's racketeering going on within the county. You're not going to racketeer me out of my property. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. You can give my other five seconds to somebody else that you've tried to racketeer here.
Madam Chair, there's nobody else signed in, but I do have an email that will be submitted for the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item five, Commissioner and County Manager announcements. Manager Brown, do you have anything for us?
I think I need to read the item.
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner... Item five is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. And yes, Madam Chair, I do have a couple of items, if I may. Number one, I'd like to point out that we will be reopening our Ninth Street Senior Center for Grand Reopening on May 1st, at the beginning of Older Americans Month. More information to come, but that event will be taking place on the first, from 10:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. Secondly, I'd like to report that HR is following up on the requests and information from the commissioners regarding the CIO and remote working, so that will be coming forward at a later date. Number three, Department of Alternative Sentencing Chief Roper has resigned from that department, and we understand a criminal investigation is underway. In accordance with our policy, the county will await the outcome of the investigation before determining next steps or making further comment. And then last, but not least, we have canceled the BCC meeting scheduled for March 25th. We've decided to push the open checkbook, or Washoe Checkbook, presentation until the first meeting in April, on April 8th, and to delay the Budget 101 Workshop until the new budgets are approved in May. More information to come on that. That's what I have.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Herman. Okay, Commissioner Garcia. And Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few items. The first I want to draw everyone's attention to is the astronauts that are lucky enough to be coming back to planet Earth today after going up for, they thought, a week or two long mission and ended up there for seven or eight, nine months, however long it's been. But I understand they're on the way back, and I think about, I was in Washington, D.C. a couple of weeks ago, and I had to get on and off the same airplane three times. I was stuck in the airport for seven or eight hours, and I'm thinking, that was a drag. And can you imagine being stuck in a spaceship for about eight months? So I'm so happy to hear that those folks are coming back today. Next, I want to talk about a very distressing meeting I had yesterday, and some of the things that were brought up here today were involved in that meeting. Manager Brown brought up when we were having our new, our grand opening of the senior center on the first. I know several of the folks that work at the senior center are concerned that the mobile kitchen is going to leave, so I'd like to make a request to know the exact date that the mobile kitchen is going to be removed from the county property. There's some concern at the senior center that the kitchen may be moved before the grand opening happens, and I'd like to know if that's a fact and what the gap might be between the kitchen moving and our kitchen opening. First question. You know, I also heard on the news this morning that the national average for gas, and the state average for gas, and our gas, the average price in this county, is a dollar and two cents more than the national average. And I think about that. I buy gas, I put 20 gallons of gas in my car. If everybody put 20 gallons of gas in their car, I do that about once a week, that means we'd pay an extra $20.40 for the same amount of gas in this county versus other places, and that would equal, over the course of a year, $1,060.80. That means all of the residents of this county are handicapped by paying an extra $1,060.80 if they bought 20 gallons a week for the whole year. You know, that's like running a marathon with a 20-pound pack on your back. Our citizens are working poor, people that rely on their vehicles to get to and from work, and to and from doctor's appointments, to and from the grocery store, have an extra burden. And so I'm prefacing that comment with this comment. And then I find out yesterday at this distressing meeting I was at, that we don't have enough money to repave our roads in a proper fashion. We're probably down 5 to 8 million... We're probably down $5 to $8 million there. So everyone should be asking what the heck's going on. I know I'm going to be asking what's going on, and I'm hoping and encouraging everybody else to look into that. Manager Brown brought up SOBER 24. Sitting on this very dais over a year ago, I brought up SOBER 24. I was alerted that things weren't right. I was alerted, and I brought it to the attention of the board then, and I brought it to the attention of the management then, and I was vilified for bringing that up. And lo and behold, here we are a year later, and one of our departments, one of your departments, the citizens, is, as a federal officers, came in and seized records from that. We're not going to talk about the details because nobody knows what the details, but when the feds show up and take records, it's never a good thing. Who was managing these folks? I gave the county a heads-up a year ago, and nobody seemed to want to follow up on that. Now we've got this situation. Folks talked about the library today, and that's part of a budget consideration as well, refunding or adding extra money to the budget. And I don't think any of us want to see the libraries harmed in any way. However, the citizens voted to rescind that sunset tax that was supposed to be sunsetted. On top of that, who I trust immensely, Ann Silver, the Director of the Library Board, or excuse me, not the Director, the Chair of the Library Board, had asked the Director for a number of months for the budget, and she was not allowed to see the budget until I brought it up again on this dais. So I want Ann Silver, the Chair of the Library Board, to talk to me, and she will, and tell me what really needs to happen there. You can't just automatically go to the worst-case scenario and say, because of this, the library is going to collapse. The sky is not falling. We're not going to let the sky fall in the library. So I'm just letting folks know that on the record, that I support what goes on in the library. I also support the folks' ability to vote and not have some commissioners overturn the citizens' votes. Put the shoe on your foot. What if you voted for something that you cared about tremendously, and somebody didn't like that, and just overturned that? So we'll keep the library going, I'm sure, but we have to respect the votes, and we have to take a good look at the budget. And that was the meeting that I had yesterday. This county is in bad shape on a number of areas. Roads, one of them. Sea taxes are off, property tax, the roads are in bad shape. You know, we need some ideas how to find some extra money. Seems that the county hired a bunch of folks and used the COVID money that was limited time limit on that, and that's part of the problem. This county has a spending problem, not a tax problem. We can't tax our way out of this. The middle class in this country is getting hammered left, right, backwards, and forwards, and the only answer is, let's raise the taxes. You know, this is not making any sense to me. We need to trim the budget. We just gave the manager a massive pay raise and a bonus. We do all of this stuff, and then we find out later that we're hurting financially. Who would go out and spend money without having the money? Who would take the finances? Who would do this with their own money? Who would do this with their own life? Overspend and then look to somebody to bail them out? This is a problem. This is one of the worst days that I've had at the county, was hearing what I heard yesterday. And now I hear that now we're not going to talk about the open checkbook, now we're not going to talk about the budget. All this stuff was planned to talk about, and now it's not going to be talked about. You just heard the manager say that. There's a reason for that. It is not called transparency. People, they don't want us to know exactly what's taking place, and you should know that. You're the taxpayers. I'm just disgusted with this. As far as the sea taxes and the other municipalities around here want us to share more of the sea taxes, they don't realize what this county provides throughout the county. You know, we've got the county jail that we take care of, we've got the CARES campus, we've got the treasurer here and his staff that is a treasurer for the whole county. The City of Sparks and the City of Reno don't have their own treasurer. We have the county clerk that handles the county business. We've got the county recorder and her staff that handle recordings for everyone and her staff, and the DA. We've got the assessor. The City of Sparks, the City of Reno do not have their own assessor or their staff. We provide as a county lots of services to the other municipalities, and it costs us taxpayers, the county taxpayers, money to do that, and we provide those services. So you can't have all of these services provided and have a bigger share of the sea taxes. We need that money here to keep these county government offices open. Sandy Tippett's brought up some good points. Those were discussed last week at my open town hall meeting. It wasn't discussed by me. Tom Daley talked about this, about the fires, mergers, if they're talking about, and Sandy was spot-on. She could be the spokesperson for the anti-proposal of doing SB 319. It doesn't make any sense for the folks that live in this county, especially the folks who want the libraries refunded. If we're going to, if the money's taken away for the fire to bail out Sparks and Reno's fire department, how are we going to pay for things that you want? Okay? So we've got to stand up for the county here. Penny Brock brought up some great points about Lee Zeldin ends the Green New Deal. We've hired people, we've got all kinds of staff here, we paid lots of money for things that the federal government doesn't think is a good idea. We need to take a look at what we have as a staff here and figure out how to balance this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout-out and appreciation to our team at the Human Services Agency for reacting so quickly to the Reno Suites guests who found themselves potentially without a home because of the new ownership in downtown Reno. I emailed Manager Brown about it over the weekend, and they had a plan, they had staff on site yesterday. I just, I'm just exceptionally proud to be part of Washoe County and the team that is so committed to supporting these vulnerable neighbors. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I had an opportunity to go to the Fire Adaptive Summit this morning, and I'm really excited for our next presentation to discuss more about fire insurance. So if there's no other comments from the board, I will move on. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot one in my notes here. You know, and this is just one example of something that I think is kind of an illogical decision that the county's made. You know, we paid a half a million dollars for some used painted rocks from Las Vegas. These are used rocks, painted rocks, half a million dollars. My question to every citizen in the county is, would you do that with your own money? Thank you.
Manager Brown, if you'll help us lead into Item 6?
Item 6 is a presentation by Commissioner Scott J. Kipper, Nevada Division of Insurance, to discuss insurance challenges in northern Nevada.
Welcome. We're so excited to have you today. Thank you for taking the time. I know you're speaking later today at the Fire Adaptive Nevada Summit, too, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hill, and members of the committee, my name, or the commission, my apologies. My name is Scott Kipper, for the record. I am the Nevada Insurance Commissioner. Very pleased and honored to be making this brief presentation in front of you today. We've got quite a story to tell about what is going on with insurance in the state, especially here in northern Nevada. The first slide we have is simply a review of our mission. Our mission is of the Nevada Division of Insurance is to protect the rights of Nevada consumers and their experiences with the insurance industry, but also to make sure that we maintain company solvency so that insurance companies have the wherewithal and the resources to pay on the claims that consumers make to them. We take both of these challenges very seriously. As I might direct you to our website for a little bit deeper dive on that, that website is doi.nv.gov. A little bit about what the division does. We regulate Nevada's roughly $30 billion insurance industry. To make that a little bit more real, that's roughly $1,000 per man, woman, and child in the state of Nevada that goes to insurance premiums. We oversee 1,500 authorized insurance companies in the state, including 140 domestic carriers, that is those companies that are situated inside it here in Nevada. We license over 250, actually, that number's closer to now, 265,000 individual licensed producers. And we say producers, we mean agents and brokerages. And of those, 25,000 of them are Nevada residents. Based on insurance premiums, the state collects a premium tax. Those taxes, the last year, exceeded $600 million, which goes to the state's general fund. The agency is an enterprise-funded agency. In other words, we charge those whom we regulate for our operating expense and budget. And one final thing, I'm very proud to share that due to the intervention and advocacy of the agency last year in calendar year 2024, the state generated an additional $9.4 million for our consumers through the intervention by the Division of Insurance. We're very proud of the activity that takes place there. Couple of things that, you know, keep us up at night and that we work very diligently or addressing are a couple of the trends that are taking place in Nevada. This is certainly an evolving insurance landscape. When I first came to the position here, health insurance was the big deal. We worked very hard to make sure that as best we could make it accessible and affordable for Nevadans. It's kind of changed now. Now, the challenges are certainly around homeowners and auto insurance. Rates are going up, and that's not due exclusively what's going on here in Nevada, but certainly in a global sense, what's taking place nationally as well as internationally. Increased claims costs from natural disasters are driving costs up, and that includes not only wildfires like we've seen to our neighbors to the west, but hurricanes, tornadoes, and the tornadic activity that took place this week. Hailstorms are a big cost driver in areas around the Midwest. Floods, and certainly, of course, hurricane activity. All of this puts pressure on the insurance industry and the insurance carriers. They need to manage their risk. They need to make sure that they have the means to pay on those claims. That's why the premiums are where they are. And I'm sorry to say, my sense is that those premiums will start and continue to increase to keep up with them, to be able to manage the risk and to pay those expensive claims. We have a level of oversight on some lines of insurance. We review lines of insurance on homeowners. We review lines of insurance on automobiles, personal lines of automobiles, to make sure that those rates are fair. The actuarial standard that is used is that they are not excessive, they're not inadequate. In other words, to make sure they have enough money to pay those claims, and then not unfairly When we look at those rates and review them and either approve them or recommend that the company come back with a different level of, most of the time, an increase, those are the standards that we're using. What we've seen in California is because of those challenges that insurance companies are being more and more reluctant to write insurance in the homeowner's marketplace. And we are working like crazy to make sure that that doesn't happen to us here in Nevada. We work very closely and collaborate with our insurance companies to provide a good regulatory environment, and we want to make sure that consumers have reasonable level of choices to pick from when they're looking for, in this case, homeowner's insurance. Auto insurance is certainly a challenge for us. A year and a half ago, we held a symposium online to talk about what was driving the cost of insurance on automobiles. Nevada in general is one of the more expensive states to purchase automobile insurance. The increase in repair costs, parts shortages, supply chain issues, particularly in Clark County, the more people driving in a confined space, the 24-hour nature of life in Clark County, all contribute to the rising claims costs and therefore the level and the impact on premiums. I did talk a little bit about homeowners and wildfire risk, but this is almost job one for us right now, is how do we manage the challenge around wildfire risk and carriers making sure that they have an adequate policy and the number of policies to address the challenges in our insurance wildfire issues. We have obviously the, you know, we say we in Nevada, northern Nevada, dodged a bullet during the Davis Fire. We were extremely fortunate that we didn't have a Paradise or Lahaina or an LA County type of conflagration. I've visited a lot with our professional firefighters and the firefighting service, and I am so incredibly impressed of the foresight, the thoughtfulness, but the dedication of what they do, not only to fight the fires, but dealing with prevention, which is one of the key issues that we're focusing on and working with our insurance industry right now. Insurance companies buy insurance to protect them from catastrophic losses. And if you've read the headlines and anything about the LA fires, those fires in LA County now are approaching eight digits in cost. They're in the tens of billions, and I think that I read somewhere the other day that we're looking at $50 to $55 billion of insured losses. Insurance companies don't have the wherewithal to pay for all that themselves, so what they do is they purchase insurance, which is termed reinsurance, from large global reinsurance companies. Because of the nature of the challenges in the fire or the catastrophic challenges that they're having, they're having to pay more claims and therefore increasing their risk. When you have more risk, rates go up, and those rates do trickle down to Nevada consumers. Now, there's a lot of state and federal efforts to maintain what's going on in our marketplace. There's a number of bills that are working their way through the, that have been introduced in our legislature to address the challenges that we've just talked about. But rather than extend that discussion, I see that my time is nearly up. What I'd like to do is entertain any questions that the commissioners may have for the division.
I see you have one more slide, so I'll allow you to exceed your time for the additional slide.
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Scott Kipper. One of the challenges that we're looking at in particularly the wildfire is the affordability and access issue. Access being, can an insurance consumer find a carrier? Because of the challenges I mentioned in California of companies leaving the marketplace or limiting the number of policies that they're going to issue does impact consumers. Our, part of our challenge at the division is making sure that consumers still have that access to policies. at the Division is making sure that consumers still have that access to policies. Because of the costs that are driving this, reinsurance, the increased rates, the propensity for increased costs as the climate changes and we have drier, more flammable opportunities in our forested areas, that creates an affordability issue as companies feel that they need to charge more rate in order to manage that risk a little bit better. So there's a number of ways that are being done. One thing I might add to this, when we're talking about condominiums and apartment buildings and commercial properties, the Division does not have any rate oversight. Those are looked at individually and underwritten individually by those particular carriers. So, and we're finding that there are some significant challenges in, is condo owners or HOAs try to find insurance to insure their properties, that that market and those who are participating in that market are really taking a long look and backing off a little bit as to what they are willing to insure. And with that, Madam Chair, I would stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Herman.
I want to give you a special thank you for coming because I was the one that requested we talk to insurance people. I feel like you have a heavy weight on your shoulders and a big responsibility in your job, and I hope that there'll be some more breaks for the people in the near future. I hope there's a way to figure out how to make it all work because I know the cost rules, and if you want to have insurance, you got to pay the cost. So, and sometimes it's not going to be available. So, thank you very much for explaining all that to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate you shining the light on some of the systemic issues that are happening nationally and here in Nevada. I think that's really informational. But I think what I need help understanding is what can we do as commissioners when we get the phone call that somebody's struggling navigating the system? How do they access the access of resources? Are there specific things in the state of Nevada that we can send them to where they can get help? It's very alarming what's happening, and people are scared. I appreciate Vice Chair Herman's interest in this topic. As these natural disasters continue, which they will, we need to be prepared here in Washoe County and in the state of Nevada to help people that are in the communities and the neighborhoods experiencing these dilemmas, and we don't know where to send them for help. So if you could help me understand that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Garcia. Again, for the record, Scott Kipper. I would direct consumers to the Division, either through our website, which again is doi.nv.gov, and our contact information via telephone is listed there. We do have both an office in Carson City as well as in Las Vegas, and we have a trained staff of consumer affairs specialists who are able to answer most questions. One of the things that the Division is working on right now is a public outreach program that we want to roll out later this spring or early summer on how to prepare in the event that they live in a wildfire-challenged area. It'll be primarily focused on wildfire, but more of an emergency response. And it can be anything, as we're going to provide a methodology of how to do a home inventory, for example, to make sure that your contents are adequately covered. Tips on shopping for insurance. A reminder to make sure you understand the evacuation route if that so happens. But it'll be a number of those preparatory items. We are a proud participant in our national organization, which is the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, and we have a great many resources that we borrow from that have withstood the test of time and energy on challenges in other states. I had the good fortune, or not so good fortune, to tour an Oklahoma tornado-ravaged community several years ago, and we take away a lot of tips and things that we can do to prepare in the event we have a catastrophic event within the state.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask one more follow-up?
Thank you. And the prevention and mitigation of this is obviously a huge part of it. Where do we send folks that have been denied homeowner's insurance? Because they can, we all know they can be denied for a variety of reasons.
Again, that's a great question, Commissioner. For the record, Scott Kipper. We have created a lookup tool on our website. If an insured in this state has been denied or non-renewed, they can go to our site, find the page, plug in their zip code, and it will drop down a list of all insurers who have indicated that they are still writing in that zip code, as well as the contact information to connect with that insurance company. We also encourage consumers to not only, you know, work with a broker or producer, and in some cases, you may need to go to several brokers or producers in order to get several comparative quotes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you very much for your presentation. I think it was very informative. What you were talking about, folks can look up an insurer that's still in the market in their zip code. I wonder if there's a way for us to have a link with our county here, if county folks need to understand that they can go to your website and find this information. So I'll talk to the county about that. Maybe we can get some type of cooperation where we can share this presentation that you had today, make it available to our citizens if they have questions about insurance and other future programs that you may introduce. We need to make sure our folks have an easy way to get that information straight from the Insurance Division. So, thank you for showing up here and making your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And I might add, you know, it's very interesting. We do these on occasion, and I'm always mildly surprised, maybe even more surprised, that more consumers are not aware of the resources and the information they can get from the Division. So that's why, you know, we are constantly doing more and more promotion, but, you know, linking to organizations like the county, I think would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipper. I just have a few questions, and really appreciate you coming down and helping spread the word, and we'll do what we can, as you heard from the commissioners, to support your office and make sure people know what you can do for people. But on the auto insurance, are states who have red light cameras or speed cameras, and this is a random question, and maybe we talk offline, do they have as high of auto insurance as we do? Because it seems like a preventative measure. When I was in Clark County recently, everyone was riding red lights. It was very scary. It's just like the culture down there. So, just curious what your thoughts are on that, or if you know anything.
Thank you, Chair Hill, and again, for the record, Scott Kipper. That's really an interesting question. I really probably need to do a little bit of research to see if there is a correlation.
Okay, yes.
But we'll do that and get back to you.
Yes, I feel bad because I have a few more, and I don't want to give you homework. I'm just curious.
That's quite all right.
I was at that fire adaptive summit earlier this morning, talking to someone who said that the fire adaptive community grants that they get in California are paid by the energy companies because they've created a lot of the fires, and they've kind of been forced into, if you're going to provide energy in California, you're going to be providing these adaptive community grants. We don't have that because NV Energy has done a lot of prevention around their facilities with our fire departments. But just curious if there's any of these bills that are looking at potential support for communities who do this type of work, and if you've thought about that.
Thank you for that question, Chair Hill, and again, for the record, Scott Kipper. There's a number of states that are doing some really innovative work along those lines. I will give you two examples. Both the states, well, states of Alabama, diverse states, Alabama, Minnesota, Oklahoma, have created a program within those states for individual consumer grants to help harden their homes or do some mitigation to prevent that home from being damaged due to a catastrophic event. Obviously, in Alabama, along the coast, the program pays consumers $10,000, up to $10,000, for hardening their homes. The way that you harden your roof, for example, you might put your home on stilts, is a way. In Oklahoma, of course, the challenges there are simply the impact of a tornado and how consumers can harden their homes to maybe tornado-proof their homes. That money comes from state grants. Again, I wouldn't want to be advocating a position that is probably above my pay grade, but there are opportunities that can be investigated. Certainly, there's plenty of interest on this in Capitol Hill as well.
Okay.
And again, I think that with the new administration may not have had an opportunity to weigh through this. I know there's a bill, kind of, I believe it's been introduced, but it's not, it's pending in Congress to address this somehow. So there is some activity going on inside the Beltway as well as within states.
Great. And maybe there's a pilot project the county could look at tackling for TM Fire, but I know that that would help. A little bit of a carrot and less of a stick on, you know, supporting communities who want to invest. And on the condos that you don't have that rate oversight, is that one of the bills that, I seem to remember a bill?
I believe there is a bill in there that would, again, for the record, Scott Kipper, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Go on.
There, I believe there is a bill that would provide the Division oversight for that level of commercial and the rates there. I just don't know where it may be headed just yet.
Okay, well, we have our legislative update, so we could ask our person who goes down to Carson City maybe to go over that with us, because I know that for my constituents, that's important because those are the folks who have fixed incomes, who are in that woo-oo area and cannot get the insurance and are retired and don't want to move. So figuring out the way to manage that is going to be tough.
Yeah, we were, again, for the record, Scott Kipper, we did provide a, had a town hall meeting last summer in Incline Village.
Thank you for doing that.
And of all the items that people brought to my attention, that certainly was one of the most important.
Yes. And then this is way out of left field, and perhaps we also need to touch base on this, but I have talked to so many constituents who have pre-existing conditions, this is healthcare, who can't get on the exchange. And I don't know if that's their issue, but I started thinking this was a user issue, and then I've had like numerous people who are not employed traditionally, that wouldn't have that traditional insurance, but are having really tough time, and they're just like trying to negotiate with doctors. This reminds me of pre, before the Affordable Care Act happened, and I was just curious if you had heard anything on this, and if I should just have them reach out to your Division on something like that.
For the record, Scott Kipper, I find that extremely odd.
Okay.
Because those policies cannot include a pre-existing condition.
Right.
As a gatekeeper to prevent them from enrolling. So I would encourage them to reach out to our office.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. And it looks like Commissioner Clark had another thing to add. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing up hardening people's homes and preventing things that could, I guess, clear space, clearing space around there. I just wanted to point out, in the future, I've made a discretionary contribution to senior rescue, and with, they're going to buy, rent dumpsters, and the firefighters' union, Truckee Meadows Firefighter Union, on their off time are going to come by and help seniors clean up around their houses and knock the brush down and junipers or whatever might be near seniors' houses here in the county. So that's a program that'll kick off very soon. So, that's kind of like what you're talking about in other states, but we're doing it on a local level and just kind of a grassroots effort with the local publication and the firefighters' union. So, we're going to be doing that here.
That sounds terrific. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kipper, for your time. I'm so sad. I think we're going to miss your insurance panel that you're doing at 1:30 today, but I can't wait to hear all about it and all that's being discussed.
I would be happy to follow up with you.
Thank you. I really appreciate your work and commitment to the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our consent items. Are there any items on consent that commissioners would like to pull? I'm not seeing any. With that, I'd love a motion, and then we'll take public comment.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garcia, may I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. We have a motion and a second, and then we'll call public comment on the consent items. Madam Clark?
Richard Borman, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning. I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Herman for returning my phone call yesterday. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Kipper for setting the stage for my presentation today, unbeknownst to me. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Clark for introducing the word transparency. My wife and I are new to the Reno area from the Midwest. We've been kind of waiting to find a home to purchase, and we thought we found one up in Golden Valley. And so we introduced, were introduced into the purchase process, come to find out this home is in a floodplain. It was difficult to get information from the builder on what exactly, what the plan was to remove the property from the flood zone. We got nearly two-year-old preapprovals from FEMA. We got a letter that was addressed to someone who's no longer part of Washoe County, again, two years old. Early on in the stage, this was February 17th, ironically, one month ago today, I tried to contact two engineers with Washoe County to get clarification on a timeline and possible mitigation work that had been done to, again, remove us from the floodplain. And they were, I was told by them, they had nothing to do with it. So my, one of my goals is endeavor to persevere. So I did that. We entered into escrow, and as we got closer and closer, my close date is supposed to be the 31st, and I'm still in a situation to where I can't get straight answers. Yesterday, on the heels of my discussion with Commissioner Herman, I was given a name to follow up and gave them an email with information from my developer, which was very specific and direct, basically saying that the ball was in the county's court. And then upon receiving that email, I got an immediate response from project engineers with the county blaming the developer. So now I'm in a situation where I'm becoming a ping pong ball, and I guess the purpose of my commentary today is what's Washoe County's role in creating unmitigated insurance disasters? And that's kind of what I feel may be happening here. I can't get a straight answer. I did get a call from the developer today, who seems to be alarmed that I'm in the know on some of this information. So, Commissioner Clark used the word transparency. I'm not seeing it. So I have a concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Penny Brock?
Penny Brock, for the record, I'd like to address 7.8.2 on monthly reports and budgets. We as taxpayers would like our treasurer to come and give reports, perhaps even the CFO, who I don't know which one handles the budgets, but both deal with transparency of our tax money. of our tax money. And accountability. From Commissioner Clark, we learned this morning that the open checkbook is not going to be done. Why are we, the taxpayers, not getting reports on the budgets? Maybe this is why you have a budget problem, because you're not hearing verbally from the treasurer and the CFO. So you're just ignoring budgets. This can't go on. Next week, you're going to have the budget meeting. Maybe we'll get, the taxpayers will get some information, but you would not exist, the county would not exist without we, the taxpayers. We, the taxpayers, you work for us. There is no business in the world that would not have accountability for how the money of a corporation or small business is being handled. The same way is supposed to happen with our county and city entities. We have a right to transparency and we have a right to information. Why is this being blocked from us? I'm also having the same problem with public records requests. They do not follow the law, which says in five to seven days, we are to get information. First of February, I sent in, in February, I sent in two public records requests. Yesterday, I got the response, finally, late, but my information was denied for stupid reasons. I understand now. I know it goes to the county manager, and I'm also told the DA's, the DA reviews any public records requests. The reasons they gave me were totally unacceptable. Today, this being in consent 7.8.2 is totally unacceptable. We, the taxpayers, want transparency and accountability for the budget and how our money is being spent. So I would ask that next month, that the treasurer and maybe the CFO are here to give reports on how our taxpayer money is being spent. We don't like to hear we've got a budget deficit. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, we have a first and a second on consent. We've taken public comment. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a question. I thought, and I'm going to direct this question to Manager Brown, did you say that the budget meeting that we were supposed to have next week is canceled?
I said the meeting scheduled for 3:25 is canceled.
3:25, and that was the meeting about the budget that missed?
That was not a budget meeting.
Okay.
It was a meeting to, to present open checkbook.
Open checkbook.
Which will be done on April 8th at the next board meeting.
Very well. Thank you.
Okay.
That was my question.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on consent. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. Yes, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Madam, or Vice Chair Herman, I think you have a block for us today.
I do. However, I have a question on eight and nine.
Do you want to ask the question, or are you asking to pull them from block?
Just like to get information on them.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Do you want to make a motion on the block, and then we'll come back to you for your questions? Is that okay?
This is so moved.
Okay, but do you mind listing?
That exception.
Yes, do you mind listing, sorry, the block for your motion?
The black block would be eight, nine, 10, and 12.
Thank you very much. Looking for a second on that? Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So back to you, Vice Chair Herman, what are your questions?
Okay, I need to know on number eight, how often does, do we have to spend this $350,000 for the chemical that they use to clean the water? Because that's a lot of money. And then the other one is nine, and I wanted, I've asked this question before and not really got a satisfactory answer, but IBALE has been used by this county for many, many years. It goes way back. And I was wondering if we ever approached any other company to do the work of auditing.
Great. Well, it looks like Eric is here for the first question on item eight.
Thank you for the record, Eric Krupp with Community Services Department. So this is a multi-year contract. So what you're seeing is amendment to an existing contract that we went out to bid in 2022 to try to provide some standardization in our rates. It is an expensive thing, but that's, that's for multiple years.
And why isn't that, that's for the old sewer, right?
Correct. This is treatment of wastewater.
No, I believe it was expired in the end of last year, and so when are we going to close it down and not have to spend this?
I'm not sure I understand the question. What was expired?
The plant was supposed to be shut down, but, you know, it was the end of its period.
This is from Stumm Wharf, though, right?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, this is all our sewer areas, so Stumm Wharf included, yes.
Okay, so that was.
Yeah, not, not just Lemon Valley, so Cold Springs and Stumm Wharf, and Stumm Wharf being the major player here.
Okay, well, that kind of brings the worry down a little bit. It's still expensive. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I remember Dwayne mentioning that we are going back out to bid on this contract, so we can make sure we get the best deal, because we're at the end of that, too. And then on the IBALE questions, and I'm looking at the staff report, trying to find when the last time that we did this, this RFQ, I don't know, Manager Brown, if you can answer that, if there's not a staff member here?
Abby, can, can you answer that? The CIO is here.
Okay, great.
I do recall that we have taken it out to bid recently, but maybe Abby has more specific information to answer your question.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Madam Vice Chairwoman. We had a, we had BDO before we had IBALE. We had IBALE for many years, and then we did an RFP, awarded that RFP to BDO, and then have gone back to IBALE, as best practice does say that we switch every five years or so. And so this was our second year with IBALE. We'd be, you'd be approving the third year of working with IBALE if you should approve this contract.
And we go back out? I can't see that in the staff report.
I don't know that that decision has been made to go back out.
Okay.
For another RFP. At this point, I would say we would want to stay for consistency purposes for, for three to five years and then do an RFP, a competitive RFP.
Okay. Ms. Hill is here. Do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Chairman Hill. I agree with, for the record, Kathy Hill, Washoe County Comptroller. We did go out to RFP two years ago for audit services. We had two people that responded, IBALE and BDO. BDO came on board. They were not capable of handling such a complex audit, and we were met with challenges and additional charges.
Okay.
IBALE can handle the complexity as it stands right now, Washoe County.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chair, do you have any other questions?
I guess I got my answers.
Great, that's great. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the block from the board? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please. Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
We do, we have Penny Brock signed in.
Thank you so much.
On item nine.
Penny Brock, for the record, yes, this is my day to talk about accountability, transparency. Any business goes RFP. None of this five years or whatever. In this age of AI and all kinds of wonderful new technology, I can't believe there's not a competitor out there that would be happy to bid this. We, the taxpayers, want RFPs every year. When you award it for two to five years, whatever, whoever you give the contract to gets complacent, because they're, they know they're not going to be held accountable. But with an RFP every year, it makes them perform and do the very best job they can. Without that, we have no accountability. So I would like to see this go out to, for an RFP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion on the block, a second. We've done public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into item 11, Manager Brown.
Item 11 is request by the Washoe County manager through the Washoe County clerk pursuant to Washoe County Code 2.030 to initiate amendments to Washoe County Code, Chapter 5, Administration and Personnel, to update provisions relating to citizens advisory boards. The amendments may include, but are not limited to, remaining, renaming the boards, clarifying that the purpose of the boards is to provide feedback on community-wide issues within Washoe County's governmental jurisdiction as part of the commissioner's support program, requiring the geographical boundaries of the boards to fall within a single commissioner district, updating provisions for appointing of members, removing the prohibition on CAB members from concurrently serving on the county's planning commission or board of adjustment, amending various provisions to comply with current open meeting law requirements, and updating provisions related to bylaws, and direct the county clerk to submit the request to the district attorney's office for preparation of a proposed ordinance in accordance with Washoe County Code 2.040.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jennifer Gustafson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. So I'm going to be presenting this item to you today because we're going to talk a little bit about process and procedure and code. And I know, I believe Candy Ramos is also in the back of the room, so if there's, if you have a question today that I can't answer, I'm sure she can answer those for you as well. So your staff is in the beginning of the process of updating the documents related to our citizen advisory boards. And today's item is the first, I would say, formal step in doing that. We do have three documents related to the Cabs, and we're looking to update all three of them. The first of those documents is the Washoe County Code itself. So the code governs the big picture. It's the document which authorized this board to create the Cabs in the first place. Code generally describes a lot of the procedures involved with the Cabs. There's various sections of the code which discusses, you know, how your Cabs are established, their purpose, how the board membership is determined, the terms of the members, how the vacancies are filled on the Cabs, when and how to remove a member from a CAB board, how to adopt the standard bylaws, how to dissolve a CAB. All of those kinds of procedural aspects are included in our code. The second documents that we're looking to update are the standard bylaws related to our Cabs. So all of our Cabs operate under a uniform set of bylaws, and obviously, this board is very familiar with bylaws. They prescribe the operating procedures for the actual meetings themselves. And then the third document that we're looking to update is what's called the CAB handbook, and that's basically the training manual for our CAB members. And that manual has been updated fairly recently, but if we are going to make code amendments and bylaw amendments, we are also going to need to update that again, and that will be done by staff. So that's just kind of giving you an overview. You know, my purpose is I want to get these documents updated, and those are the three documents that we're talking about. So today, you are here to do what's called a Chapter 2 request, and for the majority of code amendments, Washoe County Code, Chapter 2, requires a three-meeting process, so today is the first of those meetings. And at this first meeting, the board has simply asked for its permission to open up the specific chapter of code that staff are looking to amend, which in this case is Chapter 5. So that's the only decision on this topic that you actually have to make today, is just whether to open up Chapter 5 of the code. So if you make that decision, then the clerk will request the DA's office to start working on the actual ordinance itself, and so I will start working on the working copy of the ordinance. And then that working copy will be brought to you at the second meeting, which is the first reading and introduction of the ordinance, and then there's the third meeting, which we do the second reading, public hearing, adoption, possible adoption of the ordinance. So those are the three meetings, and that's the process that's actually required in state law to do that. So timing for these updates, my plan is to have the first reading, assuming you open up the chapter today. The first reading would be beginning of May timeframe is what I'm looking at, and the second reading would be either at the, you know, the last meeting in May, beginning of June timeframe. And then at that second reading, I also want to bring you a draft of the standard bylaws, and, you know, it's possible to adopt those in one meeting. If we need to have more than one meeting, that's fine as well. And, excuse me, as those documents are being updated, staff is also going to start working on those training materials. So that's kind of overall big-picture plan as far as these updates. So the proposed changes themselves, if you look in your staff report, you'll see that we've kind of bullet pointed out what the proposals are, and I'll just kind of go through those. And if you have any questions, of course, just let me know. Code sections were last updated in 2013, I'll mention, so it's been over a decade, so it's, you know, time for this review. The first proposal is to rename the citizen advisory board to constituent advisory board, and that is a small change, but the thought process behind that change is that constituent advisory board really better reflects the CAB's purpose, which is, you know, providing a forum for people to express their ideas, express their concerns, provide feedback to the specific commissioner in whose district the CAB lies. As you know, Cabs are part of the commissioner's support program, so the language change is really just an update to better reflect that. The second proposal is to add language to the purpose section to reinforce that the CAB's purpose is to provide feedback on issues within Washoe County's governmental jurisdiction. So that's really the key there, is the within Washoe County's governmental jurisdiction, you know, feedback on things that the county can actually do something about, basically. And also, just to clarify, that the CAB should not be speaking on behalf of the county. They shouldn't be making recommendations to non-county agencies on behalf of the county to clarify that as well. The next proposal is to require the geographical boundaries of the Cabs to fall within a single commissioner district rather than share commissioner district. And that change is really to provide more autonomy for you all, to remove some of the limitations on the BCC members appointing CAB members. And one of the primary purposes, as we discussed, of the Cabs is to provide feedback to the commissioner in whose district the CAB lies. So that change would also make things just a little simpler, words off any community confusion, things like that. The next proposal is to update code provisions related to the appointment of the CAB members, and specifically, the length of time to keep applications on file, and then also to simplify some of the provisions related to the appointment of members, particularly for shared districts and things like that. And then the next proposal is to remove a code provision which currently states that CAB members cannot serve on the planning commission or the board of adjustment. I'm just not seeing any reason why a CAB member shouldn't also be able to apply to serve on those boards, and so we'd be removing that limitation in code. Next proposal is to amend some provisions to comply with current open meeting law requirements. As you probably know, since 2013, there have been some updates to open meeting law, and we just want to make sure that our code reflects the current status of the law. And then finally, the last proposal is to possibly update some process provisions related to enactment of the bylaws. I noticed some things in code that wouldn't actually be how we would do the process of amending the bylaws, and so wanted to make some, some clarifications and adjustments to those provisions. So that's pretty much it. That's all that I've identified currently as needing updates or, so if you have any questions for me or any feedback, please just let me know.
Well, thank you so much for pulling this together and for the commissioner's support team for working on this. I know that some of these changes are, have been a long time coming. We have county islands that are not included in our constituent advisory boards. We, it's confusing when there's commissioners who overlap, like Commissioner Herman and I overlap in Verdi, and I know that Commissioner Garcia and Herman overlap in Sun Valley, so making sure that we're using the best resources and time of commissioners and some of these other cleanup changes are great. and some of these other cleanup changes are great, so, in my estimation. So I will go down the line to board members. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you. I may take a few minutes.
That's fine.
There's a lot of differences that I feel are... From what you've got here, I was kind of upset when I read some of the stuff, so. I got quite a bit here, so.
Okay.
Just because we want to do it right. And I think what I'm giving you is going to be the understanding of most of the citizens that go to CAB meetings. Regarding renaming of boards, the Citizen Advisory Board was created to give the citizens a voice to advise the county government about certain things. And to provide guidance from citizens, basically. You kind of said that in there, you know, but there's other things too. And so I looked up the meanings of the two words. Citizen is a participatory member of a community, a person who enjoys the freedom and privileges, and a person who owes allegiance to and is entitled to protection from the government. A constituent, on the other hand, is a voter in a representative district with power to elect or appoint representative in legislative body. Kind of political. Whereas a citizen is the basic person that lives in America. And I am a citizen. Most, everybody here is a citizen. And so that's why I can't see a reason for changing that. I'm sorry to disagree with you, but that's the way I feel. And I know that a lot of them that I've talked to feel the same way. So the purpose of the boards, like you said in a little while ago, was advisory. And to give feedback to the Commissioners and County Managers, and basically to give the citizens a voice and the ability to advise the county regarding issues that affect their community and their way of life. Advisory is CAB's middle name. And in order to advise Cabs, they need to hear development projects directly from developers, which in the past was very beneficial to Commissioners in making sound, educated decisions. Advisory boards provided constructive facts that aided in understanding the reasons behind the decisions of the citizens who were closer and who understood the impact to their communities. And Commissioners always looked, I remember this very clearly from before I became a Commissioner and shortly after, until they were changed, that we always looked at the documentation and to see if the Cabs voted yes or no. And they would give reasons, and it really helped in the Commissioners before I was on board and since. So there was a reason for that. And Cabs were always originally a business meeting, not a social gathering. An opportunity or training ground for future Commissioners and other public servants, complete with open meeting law requirements, so they were fully educated. The county tax money should not be paying for social gatherings. The taxpayers are paying, you know, it just, it doesn't make any sense. The Cabs should stay business. That's how people learn how to operate in government, is by having a place to learn. And the Cabs were provided to the citizens for that purpose. And Cabs, and this may be sound derogatory, but it's really not. There's a reason for it. Cabs should have at least one meeting a month. The reason for that is to accommodate the development requirements. And over the last few years here, it was very much discouraged. And the development was taken away from the CAB. And that was what the CAB was originally. That was one of the big deals about the CAB. It just helps the Commissioners to have reasons why to vote for something or not vote for anything. Because there's things we don't know about every, every community. We just don't know everything sitting up here. We're not very smart sometimes. So that was, that's very helpful to have the comments and the votes of the CAB members who serve their communities. They're very dedicated and they're very astute. And we need to listen to them more. Because there's a lot of times when things come up that we don't know the whole story, and it's hard to get all the information from staff. So regarding the Cabs where it's shared, originally, the districts were a certain way. Then with all the gerrymandering before all the elections, to help someone, I don't know exactly what the purpose of all that is, but it wasn't just for population or representation that way. So Kitty Jung came up with the idea that we should just share that, like your CAB, because it's half one way and half the other way. But it's still a community. And just like Verde Mobile, that's a community, and that's why those were made that way. I was thinking that that would be kind of confusing to some people, but it seems to have worked. So Kitty Jung was probably pretty thoughtful in that decision. So the reason she gave was, another reason she gave was that, you know, we need to watch our budget, so why have two Cabs in the same area? So that was the question. So, and that's why, you know, it was... Like I say, gerrymandering was the reason that it got to that point. And then, so, okay. And then the reason that restrictions were set was so there was no concurrent problems. Like a county Commissioner can't be on a CAB board. And so the same was made, that that came about halfway through your list of changes. And so it stands to reason that if Commissioners can't be there, then vice versa would be for the other, the other things, the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. So, because it is maybe, maybe a little conflictive there. So I just think that maybe we, before we bring it back as a full-fledged idea, maybe we could go back to the drawing board and start looking at it with a little bit different view. And I'd be happy to help or whatever. Or maybe we could have a committee to help you and put that together as... You know, like, we have recommendations from a lot of people, so, you know, that are on Cabs, have been on Cabs. And so I kind of compiled this that way. So, sorry to be so disruptive, but.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman, for those comments. I agree with a lot of the things that you've just said. I do want to say a few things just to clarify some things about the code. So I'll start with kind of the last thing you were talking about. I want to clarify that the code still would not allow CAB members to also serve as county Commissioners. So that's a different provision in code right now. And there is a reason for that, as I'm sure you're understanding, that that could be construed as a conflict. Because the Cabs are providing advice to the Commissioners, feedback to the Commissioners, so we wouldn't want to allow a CAB member to also be serving on the county commission. So that's not something that is envisioned in these code amendments. Another thing that, as far as you talked about with the boundaries, I think the idea between having a CAB that fits within a single Commissioner District is really to give more freedom to the Commissioners to allow you to have a little more autonomy to adjust the boundaries of the CAB. For those Cabs that currently share districts, it wouldn't necessarily entail two separate Cabs because the Commissioner in whose district could simply decide to allow that provision, or that portion to join another CAB that may already be operating in the district. And really, that would be, you know, up to you all to make those kinds of determinations about your district and the CAB boundaries within your district. Another thing I want to mention is that this opens up an opportunity to also make adjustments to those boundaries, even for those Cabs that currently fit within a single Commissioner District. And because, as we mentioned, there are a few little holes in the county, and so it would allow the Commissioners to look at, you know, the map, look at the map and decide, okay, I want to expand the boundaries or adjust the boundaries or absorb maybe some of this area. Because obviously, our community has changed since those boundaries were set. And so there may not be, there may be communities that aren't currently captured that could be captured in those boundaries. So really, the intent is to just provide a little more freedom for you to make those decisions within, within your district. And it's entirely up to you whether you want to do that or not. As far as the meeting frequency, I'll just mention that that's not something that's in our code. Meeting frequency is something that actually would go in the standard bylaws. And so our code currently is silent about things like meeting frequency. And so that wouldn't be something that we'd actually put in Washoe County Code. Because obviously, anytime you amend Washoe County Code, it takes three meetings to do so. So that's why the code is really high-level, big-picture. All of the kind of more specifics related to things like meeting frequency that would occur in the bylaws, because that only takes one meeting of this body to change those. The other things about, you mentioned the open meeting law, and I do want to assure you that, yes, Cabs are subject to the open meeting law. They are considered public bodies, so they are not considered social gatherings, anything like that. Like, they are open meeting law, public bodies. Open meeting law definitely complies to the Cabs. And then as far as the wording, citizen versus constituent, I can certainly do a little research and see whether there's a definition in Nevada law of constituent. My understanding of constituent is more broad, but I can certainly do some research and certainly look into that.
Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything else to add?
I just took the dictionary.
Okay.
Definitions.
And maybe, just for clarification, if we open up the chapter, we're not making these changes today that you are recommending. This is opening up the code and having discussions. I'm assuming the Commissioner's Support Team will have discussions with individual Commissioners before that next first reading comes into play. So this is a good time to give that input if you want to open the code and make some of these changes, correct?
Correct. That's, yeah, the only thing we're doing today is just opening up Chapter 5. But as far as the specifics, nothing is set in stone right now. I have not even started drafting the working copy of the ordinance. So there is plenty of time to get feedback from all of you and to make those changes.
Okay. And Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say that. I'm in support of opening up Chapter 5 today.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand that we're just talking about opening this up today. However, I have to agree with a lot of things Commissioner Herman had to say. And for me, you know, the name change is a non-starter for me. I'm not interested in that at all. So just keep that on the record, even though we're just talking about opening it today. I just let you know where I'm coming from. You know, the citizens, they don't understand the imaginary lines drawn in the county. Washoe County has its boundaries, but I can guarantee most people don't understand where one district line ends and the next one begins. So as a Commissioner, I want to hear from everybody. This agenda doesn't just involve Commission 2. I don't get to just vote on Commission 2. I get to vote on everything in the county. So any citizen in the county or anywhere else on planet Earth that wants to come to a Citizens Advisory Board meeting that I'm at, they're welcome to be there. You know, a lot of times, we hear things that we don't agree with. We hear things that we don't like, things that we would never do. But we need to hear those to make the proper decision. So I'm all about people showing up and voicing their opinions on whatever it may be. And that's how we learn to do a better job, in my opinion. Last week, we had, I had a town hall meeting. I had almost 50 people there. When we have a CAB meeting, we usually have more people sitting at the dais than we have in the audience. We need to do something to make the folks think that their voices count and encourage people to come back to these meetings and have a large group. We have approximately 100,000 citizens in each of our districts. I don't know what the exact number is, but, you know, when we got four people in the audience, or six people in the audience, and three of them are presenters, we're not hearing what we need to hear. And I want to, I want to encourage people to come out to these meetings and voice their opinions and/or listen to other people's opinions and see if they can learn something from what's taking place in their community. Keeping in mind that their community is the whole county, not just imaginary lines drawn randomly by different groups after every census. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other Commissioner comments before we open it up to public comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just address that for one second?
Of course, of course.
So I just want to clarify to Commissioner Clark that anyone can, of course, come to any CAB meeting right now, and our code certainly does not prohibit that. And I know that one of the goals of this board is to increase CAB attendance, make sure that the topics that are on the CAB meetings are things that the public's really interested in. And so, of course, the code, of course, won't prescribe that in any, in any way. But yes, the boundaries of the Cabs really are just limited, are set currently. And one of the things that this could allow is for the Commissioners to increase those boundaries of the CABs if they choose. But just because you don't live in a CAB boundary does not mean that you can't come to the Cabs and provide your opinion about any topic. And the code certainly does not prohibit that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I ask another question?
Of course.
Thank you. So I wasn't suggesting that at all. My point is citizen versus constituent, okay? Constituents, my constituents live in my district. However, citizens live in the whole county. So that's where I want to split hairs and call it a Citizens Advisory Board, and not suggest at all that anyone's excluded, but everyone's included. And the citizens of the county versus the constituents of the district. And I'm going to defer to Commissioner Herman. She read it in the dictionary, and I'll go with the dictionary's definition as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. I didn't understand that you were combining those, those two concepts. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. But again, this could, this could be up for further discussion. And it sounds like if this were to move forward today, you'd be looking into what those two definitions are and what that means to the county and on the state level, and come with a recommendation for the Commission to decide how we want to move forward.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other Commissioners before we open it up to public comment? Okay, Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Heidi Soper, followed by Pat Davison.
Good morning. It's me again. I'm Heidi Soper, Vice Chair of the Sun Valley CAB. I've read the changes proposed by Manager Brown and recommending a few comments that we've discussed. Mr. Brown has recommended renaming the Citizens Advisory Board to Constituent Advisory Board to better reflect the CAB's primary purpose of acting as a liaison and providing advice to the specific Commissioner in whose district the CAB is located, as well as the Board as a whole. We talked about this, a few people, not the Board in specifics, but they did not like being called a constituent. They wanted to be called a citizen. Constituent for a lot of the older citizens and the Hispanic was very confusing for them. They did not understand what that meant. And if you're going to keep calling us an advisory committee, then we need topics of conversation to have with our citizens that we can pass on. conversation to have with our citizens that we can pass on their opinions and advice to our commissioners. At this point, we are an information board. Topics where our citizens' input actually matters would greatly increase our attendance if the meeting was advertised to the entire valley. I also feel that allowing topics of conversation on countywide jurisdiction is a good thing. We have been very limited to topics of conversation that had to pertain to Sun Valley only. We have had various concerns discussed by other cabs that pertain to Sun Valley as well, and they've been denied because they were already discussed at other cabs. Examples is RTC, NDOT, and TMA. If the boundaries of the Sun Valley cab are changed to only one commission district, we lose a large area of Sun Valley, where we have a large population with an interest and a stake in the cabs. I don't agree that the cab members don't have a conflict with being on the cab when they are also on the county's Planning Commission or Board of Adjustment. Perfect example is the Chocolate Drive project. The Planning Commission originally denied the project. Chocolate Drive was also recently in front of the Board of Adjustment for changes they wanted. At the time of the Planning Commission denial, we had no cab member on the board. However, that has now changed, as Amy Owens is now with the planners and the Sun Valley cab. I don't know if Washoe County cab has a member on the Board of Adjustment, but I hope you'll take these into consider.
Thank you very much.
Pat Davison, followed by Veronica Cortez.
Good morning, Chair Hill, Commissioners. My name is Pat Davison. Thanks for this opportunity to share some thoughts. Just wanted to zero in on one point in the staff description of the role of the cab, and that's on page 3, as liaison and advisor. Strongly support that, want to emphasize the importance of that, and there's three reasons why. First is I like that because it implies that there will be information sharing before changes or decisions are made. In other words, the county commits to taking a proactive approach, not reactive, not telling us after the fact. Second, it focuses on resident and business feedback at the local or grassroots level. Instead of us all coming here to Ninth and Wells, it's government coming to us at our local neighborhood. And third, it reinforces the need for communication to be a two-way street. You're not just telling us information, giving us information, but you're asking for opinion, whether it's development code changes, the library budget, or animal services, or some other county topic. My only recommendation to add is that you consider holding a workshop, which would be a casual, informal question-and-answer session before the NRS procedures kick in. So that would be the only thing I would ask you to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Veronica Cortez, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias. My name is Veronica Cortez, proud Citizens Advisory Board, Sun Valley, District 5. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for being here. This is actually my first meeting here, here, but I do intend Citizens Advisory Board in Sun Valley, like I said, I am a board member, newest board member. I've actually been out in Sun Valley since Grandma and Grandpa came out in the 50s from Texas, so we're local ranchers and farmers. I set up a nonprofit out there that we work with the court systems to get community service done. We work with the churches to do volunteer services for kids caught up in either court cases, or they need to do their confirmation, or just any type of community service or volunteer hours. I work with the homeless out there. We give them day jobs so they can move on with their life and do things. I work very closely with Commissioner Garcia, Herman, the Mr. Brown, sorry, I'm not good at labels, I'm not real legal, I'm just straight Sun Valley. Went to Virginia Palmer, Billinger's, and Alder Reed, so, you know, just a local girl. But like I said, I am on the Citizens Advisory Board. I started going to the meetings about a year ago. I'm not going to lie, went for the snacks, they're great, thank you, Hobies. And little by little, I moved my way up, and I'm on the board now, and I've noticed that. I love what you're saying. Don't think you're alone. We are with you, but we're so little and few that if you look, our generation, and I'm not that young, but I consider myself 30s, but I'm not, we need to represent. So I'm out there, I'm on social media, I have three Facebook pages, and I'm out there the ones talking about, we need to keep the Citizens Advisory Board with that name. I didn't join because I'm a constituent, I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen representing my parents, my grandparents, my neighbors, and I'm not here for the money. If, I hate saying this, but my father's very well off. I'm not here for the money, I'm here for the citizens, and every time I stand up here, this is not what I'm saying. This is what everybody else is saying, and they're telling me, hey, I'm reading my Facebook pages, this is going on here, this is going on there. Honestly, I think if we get one representative in Sun Valley, it's going to be super detrimental because there's such a different range of people that live out there and do things. If we get one person out there, they're going to say what they want and maybe not be represented on maybe a different issue. And sometimes, that's what it feels like out there. I've been starting to go to these meetings now here at this building, like I said, the Citizens Advisory Board, I do some other Citizens Advisory Boards, just to see what's going on. Like I said, I'm new, I'm coming from 15 years clean off of crystal meth, so I've been through the system, I've been rehabbed, I've opened up two, I'm a notary who provides pro bono to the citizens of Sun Valley for free, and I just would like to say, Citizens Advisory Board would like to stay out there and stay active in the community, and we like our name, and if we do get this committee together, maybe we can have...
Look at you, following the rules. I appreciate it. Thank you for that comment.
Penny Brock, followed by Roger Edwards.
Penny Brock, for the record, she's a hard act to follow, right? We love her. I'm on the South Valleys CAB. I'm not representing them because we didn't have a meeting, but before Christmas, six days before Christmas, we had a cab workshop, I guess that's what you call it, six days before Christmas. No matter that we were all caught up in, you know, the holiday and family and, you know, the, no, we had to meet right then and there. Why? This agenda item is not based on anything we talked about, we, the people, members of, citizens of the cabs. No, we don't like the name change to constituent. We are citizens. Secondly, I'd like to know, where is the report? We were promised the report. Our tax dollars paid for a consultant to come in and be the emcee, or whatever you call it, of that workshop. Where's our report? Why isn't that attached? Why doesn't Ms. Gustafson have that report to work off? Maybe she does, I don't know. Also, we would like to meet every monthly, and we just don't understand what this agenda item is all about. We were told at that December meeting, six days before Christmas, we would be getting the report. The other thing about this agenda item, it was not even sent to the cab members, at least in South Valleys. We didn't get notice of this agenda item. That's why there's so few people here, and that's not right. There again, where's the transparency to, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if it was 100 people that showed up at the workshop six days before Christmas? Why wasn't this agenda item sent out so they would know they needed to be here? We are, again, we're not being represented. The citizens are not being represented, not only the cab board members, but the citizens. Why are we not being included for this important agenda item? I would hope with the May meeting, end of May, first of June meetings, there is better information sent out to the cab board members and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Roger Edwards.
Good afternoon, Roger Edwards, for the record, Vice Chairman, North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I went to my first meeting as a cab member in January of 2000. And if we're not advising the county on items that the citizens, our neighbors, are bringing to us, then we're not an advisory board. Clear enough by definition. I have to applaud the county manager, he shows up for our meetings all the time, and my county commissioner, she shows up all the time. But like has been announced several times by other cab members, the announcements don't get out to the community, so the community doesn't participate. And in Golden Valley, we have a big community sign that we'd be happy to put up a banner in before each meeting, but they're like 40 bucks a copy. So anyway, that's one thing to consider. But one of the main things we need to talk about, and it was changed by the deputy county manager, who happens to be in attendance today, to remove the development from our meetings. That's one of the main things the community comes to the cabs for, clearly. Like, they just got, well, they're in the process of putting a 200 development, 200-home development in the middle of Golden Valley. And I've lived there for 35 years, and I never got one announcement, which I was told by the deputy county manager that I would get an announcement for any development that went on in my cab area. I've never gotten one announcement of anything. And the North Valleys is one of those areas that's exploding with developments. So, you know, we're not, nobody comes to the cab meetings because we don't have developments here anymore. Well, and if nobody comes to cab meetings, then I guess there's no reason to have them. Our two representatives are really faithful about showing up, so that's the kind of things we need to fix, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed in, but we do have an email to place on the record.
Thank you very much. Okay. Bringing it back to the commission, Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
We just had mention of signs, and that's something Sun Valley hasn't made, because we get advertised on their big old board, you know, in front of the casino. So we have a good attendance there, but there's no notice anywhere else. But that's, it would be so easy, and we used to have this, each area at the, like, for instance, Golden Valley, if we had a sign at the entrance of Golden Valley saying, "Cab meetings, come and join," and it's such and such day of the such and such week.
Right, every third, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so people know, oh, and it reminds them when they're coming home from work, oh, let's go to the cab meeting. And so that is an important thing. We had them in Palomino Valley, I know, because I was on that cab since it started, and, I mean, that's like back in the 18, in 1980.
No.
Not 18. I know I'm old, but, so, that's a really important thing for, that's the cheapest advertising you can get. It's a sign about that size, and they're painted up nice on the, and that could be at Sun Valley, too, you know, you could have one at both ends of the area. I mean, it's just easy to do that, and they tore them down. When I started really pushing to get the cabs back, somebody went out and tore them all down in my valley, so. But they, it's a one-time cost, put them up, they stay up, you know, and people are, people move into an area and they really want to meet people, and having something like that, the cab meeting once a month, it's just nice, you know, that that's, they're advertised that way, and it's really cheap. It's the cheapest advertising you can get. I know, I'm in the real estate business, so.
Yeah. You know about signs. Well, I'm sure that that's something that could also be pursued with Commissioner discretionary funds as well.
I know, a lot of people, yeah, well, yeah, in fact, I've done that, so.
Oh, great, great.
So, not discretionary, but I paid for them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Vice Chair?
No.
No, okay. Commissioner Garcia? Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this was a classic example of exactly what we have these meetings for, is we get to hear from the citizens. It was nice to hear from folks that I don't know and their opinions. I think Ms. Cortez is a ball of energy, very exciting to meet her, and, you know, just talking to the citizens, you get some feedback. I like the, also like the idea of having a little open forum before the actual formal meeting starts, where people can talk about things that they want to talk about and maybe not have anything to do with really the meeting, but neighbors meeting neighbors, and that's what this is about, should be about the community and how we can bring folks together and hear...
If we're going to make these changes, we capture the concerns of the CABs, we go back to them, we ask for some input, if we're going to open up this chapter, and so I will motion to approve a request by the county manager through the county clerk pursuant to Washoe County Code 2.030 to initiate amendments to WCC Chapter 5, Administration and Personnel to Update provisions relating to Citizen Advisory Boards. And so the amendments that we heard today, we want staff to look at those, but also reach out to the CABs, get some input, and come back to this board after hearing the input of today's meeting. So that is my motion, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions by the board on that motion? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And those opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Gustafson, for your work and Commissioner's support. Thank you for your work on this. Looking forward to having the conversation as we move forward. We'll now move into Item 13, Manager Brown.
Item 13 is Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Legislation or Legislative Issues Proposed by Legislators by Washoe County or by Other Entities Permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to Submit Bill Draft Request or Such Legislative Issues as May Be Deemed by the Chair or the Board to Be of Critical Significance to Washoe County. Pending legislative bills can be located at the county website. Current bills the county is tracking that may be reported on or discussed are also listed on the Government Affairs section of the county website. Due to constraints, time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills the staff will seek direction from the commission on during this item will be posted on the website, again, under Government Affairs. That will be posted by 6:00 PM the Friday before the meeting. Due to the rapid pace of legislative session, additional bills which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners will be posted as soon as known.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Ms. Matiavich is here, and I think you have a few bills you want to chat with the board
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Kaden Smatiavich, Government Affairs Liaison for Washoe County. Madam Chair, you're correct, I do have a couple of bills. Just very quickly, and I recognize that, once again, I'm the lady standing between you and lunch, so I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can. But just a quick note, we're on Week 7 of '17. To date, 958 bills and resolutions have been introduced. Yesterday was a big deadline day for us. There were a number of bills that were introduced yesterday. I don't have any of those to bring to you yet today, just because we have not had time to review them. Washoe County is currently tracking 849 bills, BDRs, and budgets, and to date, we have received 197 requests for fiscal impact evaluation. and to date, we have received a hundred and ninety-seven requests for fiscal impact evaluation from the Legislative Council Bureau. Madam Chair, I did, as I was coming in, returning from Carson City, I was able to catch the tail end of Insurance Commissioner Kipper's presentation, and I heard your question to him about bills. I, I think that the one that you were referencing, I'll need to go back and read it in more detail again, is AB 376, and that makes a number of changes, puts into place a regulatory experimentation program for insurance project, product innovation, which is intriguing. And so we'll do a further analysis of that bill and present that to you at a future meeting at the point that we've had a chance to do an evaluation, and if we have a recommendation for you on a position, or if we feel that it aligns with your already adopted legislative principle of supporting legislation that helps address the availability and affordability of property insurance for homeowners, then we would move forward in supporting that bill under that existing legislative principle. So I'll stop there, see if you have any questions on that.
I don't. Do board members have any questions? Not seeing any. I would say proceed.
All right. The bill that we had identified for you for discussion, specific bill that we had identified for you for discussion today, and this was posted to the county's website on Friday afternoon, is Senate Bill 319. This is Senator Daley's bill, which establishes provisions relating to county fire protection districts. And Madam Chair, I don't know what your preference would be, I'm prepared to do sort of a section-by-section walkthrough of the bill, if you'd like. I don't know if the county manager had any opening comments that he would want to make with respect to the bill for the work that he and the other city managers and Trekkie Meadows Fire Chief Way have been doing, so at your direction, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm ready to do that, or just take questions on the bill.
Well, Manager Brown, do you have anything for us?
Thank you. For the record, County Manager Eric Brown, I want the commission to know that this Thursday, the managers plan, and the managers and the chiefs plan to get together with our Legislative Council to look at this bill and try to come up with a consolidated list of amendments. So if there are thoughts either today or between now and Thursday that any of you as commissioners want to share with me or Ms. Matiavich, I'm happy to hear what your thoughts are.
Great, and I think we saw that memo, thank you for supplying that to the board, about how we're trying to work together with the cities on this approach and understanding that, you know, we're, we are stronger when we work together, so I appreciate that. And so, yes, I think if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Matiavich, going through the sections, and commissioners can ask questions, and we'll continue to have a dialogue on this, because we're in no rush, there's no hearing set on this yet, or are we in a rush?
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatiavich, for the record, we're not in a rush, there is not a, a hearing set, however, we are beginning to approach initial deadlines for, for the bill to be heard, the first House passage, or first House Committee passage. So this bill would need to have been passed out of Senate Government Affairs by April eleventh, so that's a few weeks away, there is still time, and I, and I believe Senator Daley certainly understands that because this involves local governments, and you are subject to open meeting law and can't make decisions on things without conducting that business in public, there is some understanding there, but as the volume of bills that they have to process, we get pushed up against that deadline. The sooner that we can, we can arrive at those positions, the better.
Okay.
I would say that. So Madam Chair, I, I'm going to do my best to, there's a lot in this bill, so forgive me, I'm, I'm, this is going to be a little bit longer than I normally will, but I know that this is an important issue for, for you as a board and for our community. And my ask to you today would be, it would be helpful to me, as we discuss this bill, to understand that, sort of, my framing this is thinking about you in your role as the Washoe County Board of Fire, of County Commissioners, not as the Board of Fire Commissioners. And I understand that, you know, as we move through the bill, I'm going to, I'll be careful to try to talk about, because the bill discusses boards, and in some cases, it's the Board of County Commissioners, in some cases, it's the existing Board of Fire Commissioners, and in some cases, it's the Board of Fire Commissioners that could be created under the enabling provisions of this bill. So I just, as we work through it, we'll, I'll do my best to be clear about which I'm speaking of, but I may ask for clarification from you on that.
Okay.
So with that, I'm going to start a little bit out of order in the bill, and I'm actually going to start with Section fifteen of the bill, because Section fifteen of the bill is actually the only portion of the bill that is a mandate. The remaining portions of the bill are enabling, and I think there's an important distinction there. So Section fifteen requires the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to, by interlocal agreement, establish a board to study the creation of a county fire protection district that would be formed in accordance with the structure that's enabled by Sections Two through eleven of this bill to consolidate fire protection services within territory in Washoe County and the cities of Reno and Sparks. The board required under this section must be composed of two members of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners appointed by this board, by your board, two members of the Reno City Council appointed by that city council, two members of the Spark City Council appointed by the Spark City Council. And the board required under this section must evaluate the impact of a county, excuse me, a consolidated county fire protection district will have on the response times, preparations, and costs of providing fire protection services in Washoe County and the cities of Reno and Sparks. They must determine any legal mechanisms necessary to consolidate fire services between the county and the cities. They must determine any assessments necessary to support the consolidated district, not later than July first, 2026. They must prepare and submit to, so this board that's been created must prepare and submit to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners a written report with the results and recommendation of the study and any recommendations for legislation. A majority of the board that's created by the Board of County Commissioners, subject to this mandate, a majority constitutes a quorum, but any action of the board must be approved by a majority of the members and at least one member appointed by each participating governing body. The board is authorized to contract with other entities to assist the board in carrying out the requirements set forth in this section. And this section of the bill becomes effective on passage and approval and will expire by limitation on July first, 2027. So essentially, that board is stood up, completes its work, submits the report, and then would no longer be authorized beyond July one, 2027. And I think that date's important, because it would allow that board, if necessary, to reconvene during the 2027 legislative session, if there were deliberation that was needed with respect to that. So again, that's the only section that's a mandate. And then I'm going to walk through the remaining provisions of the bill, and there's a lot here, so forgive me, that enables the creation of a county fire protection district in Washoe County, which contains, contains territory in the unincorporated county and the cities of Reno and/or Sparks. So Section two of the bill authorizes the Board of County Commissioners and the cities of Reno and Sparks to enter into an interlocal agreement to consolidate any contiguous unincorporated territory within the county and any incorporated territory within the cities into a county fire protection district. It requires the interlocal agreement to establish the boundaries of the county fire protection district, which must include only the area the district is to serve. It requires that all debts, obligations, liabilities, revenues, expenditures, and assets of a former fire protection district or fire department consolidated into a county fire protection district pursuant to this section must be assumed or taken over by the new district. It authorizes the county and each participating city to negotiate concerning the manner of contributing to the budget of the newly created county fire protection district in proportion to the sum of revenues derived from each from special assessments, taxes, licenses for business and gaming fees, and services performed in the district. It sets forth that a county fire protection district formed under the Act is a political subdivision of the state and has perpetual existence unless dissolved by interlocal agreement. It establishes that the district shall be governed by a Board of Fire Commissioners composed of two members of the Board of County Commissioners and two members of each participating city. Additionally, the bill establishes that unless the Fire, Board of Fire Commissioners directly employs a clerk, the county clerk is the ex officio clerk of the district, and unless the Board of Fire Commissioners directly employs a treasurer, that the county treasurer is the ex officio treasurer of the district. It requires that any action of the Board of Fire Commissioners must be approved by a majority of members and at least one member appointed by each governing body. Sections three and four sets forth the duties and authorities of the, of the Board of Fire Commissioners. Section five authorizes the Board of Fire Commissioners to hire a fire chief. The fire chief, and, and further, authorizes that such fire chief may hire such employees as authorized by the board, may administer all fire control laws in the county fire protection district, and perform any other duties as may be designated by the Board of Fire Commissioners and the state forester fire warden. It further authorizes the Board of Fire Commissioners to provide the fire protection activities required by the bill by entering into agreements with other agencies or range land fire protection associations, or to support volunteer fire, fire departments within the district. Section six authorizes the Board of Fire Commissioners to, and this is the newly created by Board of Fire Commissioners, to, by resolution, acquire systems, equipment, structures, and property, and establishes that the title to any property must be vested in the district. Section six authorizes the issuance of bonds and other municipal securities payable by general or ad valorem taxes. Section seven requires the Board of Fire Commissioners to prepare an annual budget, and that such budget must be based upon the amounts needed to defray the expenses of the district and to meet unforeseen emergencies, and that the amounts negotiated between the county and the cities under Section two of the bill, and the amount of any assessment levied pursuant to Section eight of the bill, must be sufficient to raise such sums. Section eight requires that the Board of Fire Commissioners to determine if it is necessary to levy an assessment to pay the expenses of the district, and if so, to submit the proposed assessment to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. Upon receipt of a proposed assessment from the Board of Fire Commissioners, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners shall certify the assessment to the county assessor. The county assessor shall enter the amount of the assessment on the assessment roll against the assessed property. The assessment is to be collected at the same time and in the same manner as ordinary county taxes are collected, and is subject to the same penalties and the same procedure in sale in case of delinquency as provided for ordinary county taxes, and that all laws applicable to the collection and enforcement of county taxes are applicable to the special assessment. Section nine establishes the debt limit for the county fire district. Section ten sets forth how the accounts, bills, and demands against the county fire district are to be audited, approved, and paid. Section eleven establishes provisions regarding dissolution of a county fire district, including a requirement that the taxes for the payment of any bonds or other indebtedness of the district must continue to be levied and collected until, until they are satisfied. Section twelve sets forth provisions for adjustments of the boundary of the county fire protection district, including approval processes, notices, and required findings. Section thirteen addresses elimination and removal of fire hazards from private property when the owner of such property has been directed to do so by the county fire district and fails to comply. And Section fourteen amends the City of Reno charter requirement that the city manager appoint a fire chief to allow an exception from that requirement if a fire chief has been appointed, subject to the provisions of this bill. Section fifteen is where we started, so I'm just skip that one. Section sixteen specifies that the provisions of the bill may not applied, may not be applied to modify directly or indirectly to any taxes levied or revenues pledged in such a manner that would adversely impair any outstanding obligations of any city, excuse me, county, city, or town, including without limitation, bonds, medium-term financing, letters of credit, or any other financial obligations, until all such obligations have been discharged in full for provision of their payment or redemption has been made. Section seventeen specifies that the provisions of NRS 354599 do not apply to this bill. For those who don't know what that section means, NRS 354599 specifies that if the legislature directs one or more local governments to establish a program or provide a service, or increase a program or service already established, which requires additional funding and that expense is more than five thousand dollars, that the legislature must provide for a revenue source to pay those expenses. That law is exempted in this bill. And finally, Section eighteen establishes that Sections one through fourteen and Section sixteen become effective on July one, 2027. That's the end of my summary, Madam Chair.
Okay, but just to help provide context, the Section fifteen that you highlighted, which I think is really the most important section of this bill, because this bill needs some work and some time to, if, if anything were to proceed, Section fifteen is really saying that group, that initial stakeholder group of elected officials can make recommendations and bring it back to the next session. This is, kind of makes that group official, and this bill, say it were to go into law, those changes could be made in the twenty-seven legislative session, is that so?
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatiavich, for the record, I, I think it, I think it contemplates that that board might make recommendations to the 2027 legislature. It doesn't provide for a bill draft request.
Okay.
So that's not guaranteed. Certainly, Washoe County is entitled to bill draft requests, the City of Reno is entitled to bill draft requests, as is the City of Sparks, and I do think that our legislative delegation, if there were bills that were needed to implement this, would be open to, potentially open to sponsoring those for us. I would agree with you, Madam Chair, that really, Section fifteen sort of requires by law to be carried out what you and the, the two cities and the Board of Fire Commissioners have already put into motion.
Started, yeah.
And it provides a framework, and it, and it will be, it's, it sets up that enabling legislation that would allow a fire protection, protection district to be created in the future, and it, and it puts a framework around it. And so in some ways, it directs the study, and I think that's the, the piece that Manager Brown was speaking to, that if we think that there are, are parts of that study, specific things that we think need to be included in that study that aren't in the bill, and, and that would be important if the conclusion of that study were to lead to the county and one or more of the cities wanting to move forward with it to be answered. And so I think we do have an opportunity here to address that through amendments to this bill, but again, if there are things that are found through that process that might be needed in future sessions, I think we would have an opportunity to pursue that in the 2027 session.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a follow-up to your question about Section fifteen specifically, what is the fiscal note related to Section fifteen, the establishment of this new board? I heard clerk time, treasurer time, what other things would we be absorbing as Washoe County?
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatiavich, through you to Commissioner Garcia. So with respect to Section fifteen, I don't know that I can definitively say that there would be a fiscal impact for that. I, I do think that in, in the discussions around this, it has been contemplated that perhaps hiring a somewhat impartial third-party consultant to conduct that study might be, might be beneficial, and so to the extent that there were expenses associated with that study, and, and it does, you know, that section does authorize the board to contract with other entities to carry out the study, so the county could incur costs associated with that. Moving forward, the cost to the county, the direct cost to the county, I think, are particularly, as you identified, that there would be responsibilities, unless the Board of Fire Commissioner appointed their own clerk and their own treasurer, which would have to be at the expense of the district, that there would be capacity within the office of the county clerk and capacity within the office of the county treasurer that
capacity within the office of the county treasurer that would need to be designated to carrying out the provisions of this, and potentially even, I think, the assessor's office is implicated in this, if in fact, an assessment were necessary, and the assessor were to have to carry that out. Other than that, I mean, I think there's some administrative time associated with levying of that, of any assessment or any other taxes, but that I see being accomplished through the normal process that you do as part of the budgeting process every year, whereby many entities bring you their rate that is to be levied, and through that process, you certify that rate. So to me, I think there's a minor administrative cost there, but I think that that could be absorbed within existing county resources.
Vice Chair Herman? No. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, thank you. You know, I would ask the department heads what it's going to cost them, rather than just say it's not going to be any added expenses to the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk sitting here. You know, extra work means extra work. It's going to be extra work. It's going to be something more than what they normally do. Somehow or another, there'll have to be some extra work involved. So that needs to be taken into account, first of all. But I want to go back to the basis of this whole particular bill. Every single elected official and every single department head and just about everybody in the planet wants to talk about affordable housing. This particular new tax will make housing less affordable, right from the get-go. I've talked to the acting fire chief, I've talked to the chief that just retired, I've talked to the treasurer, I've talked to the assessor. It looks like the average house that sells in this county is about $550,000 to $565,000. That same house will have probably a new tax bill, but it won't be called a tax, but it'll be a tax, a fee, a cost, to the tune of about $4,000 or $5,000. So who on fixed incomes, seniors trying to not be homeless, how are they going to come up with an extra $4,000 or $5,000? That's my question, not to you, that's my question to the universe. How does this make housing more affordable? As a forty-year mortgage broker, principal interest, taxes, and insurance make up your monthly payment. If your monthly taxes go up, and whether it's a fee, or whether it's a tax, an extra $4,000 or $5,000 a year, and that's just for the average house, what about people in expensive houses? What about big giant warehouses? I mean, this is a massive tax increase, and it's not transparent. This is one of the bigger things that could be happening, and we've got, what? How many citizens do we have in this room? We have a half a million people in the county, and nobody's even here listening about this. This thing is flying under the radar, and it's not going to be good. This is basically, from the fire chiefs that I've talked to, subject matter experts say that this will only cost more and not give us one extra fireman, not one extra fire truck, not one extra fire station. Cost more, get the same. Who in their right mind wants to pay more and get the same thing? They do this at the market all the time. They reduce the size of cans and containers and raise the price. We're going to pay more and get the same. This, I'm totally against this, and you can take that to whoever wants to hear it. But this is not going to fix the fire situation. All the two fire chiefs, the acting and the retired, both told me that we need automatic aid and one dispatch center for the county to fix the fire issues. And otherwise, this is solely designed to bail out two municipalities that are having financial difficulties because of mismanagement. I'll say it on the record. They want us to bail them out, Reno and Sparks. And this isn't fair to the citizens of the county, the citizens of the unincorporated parts of the county. Also, I don't think we need Carson City meddling in our fire district here in Washoe County. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Smatievich, do you have any comments to that, or if you don't, no worries.
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatievich, for the record. Commissioner Clark, I know you did ask some questions in there. I'm not certain that they were specifically directed to me.
Just making some comments. It's not your bill, you don't have to answer for it.
But if I may clarify, if I misspoke or I wasn't clear, I was not suggesting that there would not be costs to the clerk, the treasurer, or the assessor. I don't know, I certainly can't quantify those, but to the extent that capacity within those offices would be required to administer things related directly to this new fire protection district, I do think that that is a new mandate on those offices, and so yes, I agree, there would be some burden to them in the form of staff time, fiscal burden to them in the form of staff time capacity.
Certainly. I wasn't implying that you were indicating that it wouldn't be that way. My comment was, we should get those department heads in here and let them speak for themselves. They're the ones running those departments, and I think we should hear, us as commissioners should hear, from the folks who are going to do the work. You know, we don't just get to wave a magic wand and things happen. Somebody's going to have to do the work, and I think the department head should come in and explain how they, if this goes forward, which I hope it doesn't, but if it does, how they would staff their offices, and how that would affect our budget, and how their budgets could be increased to do the extra work.
Madam Chair, may I ask a clarifying question of Commissioner Clark, Kayden Smatievich, for the record. Commissioner Clark, would you suggest that perhaps that be one of the things that should be contemplated in the study that's required under section fifteen of the bill?
Absolutely.
Of what the fiscal impact would be?
Absolutely.
To those departments if at some point in the future, the county and the cities were to decide to enter into the enabling fire protection district structure?
That's, I'm suggesting we ask the people who are going to do the work, how they're going to do the work, if they have to do the work. Pretty simple. I mean, you know, if you hire somebody to do a job, they have to, you know, figure out a contract, or figure out the costs involved, and the labor, and the materials, and whatever else they may need to do this. It isn't just, you know, you got to pay. You got to pay for everything in your shopping cart.
Thank you for that clarification. Kayden Smatievich, for the record.
And when I had spoken to, well, actually, in the direction from our last joint meeting, when we discussed this, there was a lot of discussion about automatic aid. Would it be appropriate to add this into that study period if, I don't know if that would be appropriate, or if that question should be asked, or contemplated as part of that discussion with the two jurisdictions as well?
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatievich, for the record. I think at this point, the feedback from this board on things that you would want to see in the bill, you know, this is an opportunity for that. I don't know that in the sections of the bill that can contemplate the consolidated district, at that point, I don't know that the issue of automatic aid between independent districts is as germane, but certainly if that's something that you wanted to be included in the study, I also think that you could include that in the scope of the study that's conducted, even without having that entered into the legislation, and it, you know, as you continue to work through Manager Brown and interim chief Way and the two city managers on identifying what the scope of that study would be, I think you could include it there without it needing to be in the legislation, but if you wanted it there, we could suggest that.
Right. And I think one of the thoughts I had looking at this bill is, I appreciate that Reno and Sparks want a seat at the table if, say, this district is made after this study is done, but I think one thing we need to bring up, and I hesitate to seem like, you know, controlling in this aspect, but the Board of Fire Commissioners does represent Reno and Sparks. We all have, you know, eighty-some percent of my district is in the City of Reno. I represent citizens of the City of Reno. The same thing with the rest of this board and the City of Sparks. So to me, the fire district as it sits is, you know, if this were to go forward, makes more sense than creating a new board. That's my two cents. I have spoken to the bill drafter Senator Daley about, you know, my concerns about making sure that the county doesn't have a situation where Sparks and Reno could have more power than the county, and I appreciate that the breakdown is like more along the flood authority board, where you can't really do anything without at least one person from the flood authority from each jurisdiction voting for a change, and that's appropriate, but, so I think the compromise was made, but that is something that I was thinking. Commissioner Clark, were you signed in?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm agreeing with what you're saying. I want to salute you for what you're saying. Thank you.
So that's another thing that could make it easier. You don't have to create a new board, you know, less bureaucracy around here. So any other commissioner comments? Vice Chair Herman? Do you have that? Try it again.
Oh, there.
There you go.
It's hard to tell. I've been against this from day one, as you know, so, for many, many reasons, and a lot of it is cost, too, you know, besides the mismanagement that could occur, because we've got a pretty smooth-running operation going right now, so, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Right.
That's my attitude. So, yes, I agree with Commissioner Clark that we need to get an appraisal of what it would cost for all these things that we need to do to try and put this through, and give everybody a fair chance at doing the right thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm speaking about the board that would be, I know there's numerous boards discussing this, it's the board that would be formatted after the board outlined in fifteen. I'm not speaking about the board outlined in item fifteen, because that, I think, you do need Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County to study this, if you're going to study this. I think the one nice, the one thing, if I'm going to try to be positive, and I always try to see these things in a positive light, first of all, the state of Nevada is interested in providing better fire service to this region. I think we need to be cognizant that, I think that is the bill draft, that's what folks are looking towards. This is a study, if it's astronomical, I don't see it moving forward, but, so that is where I think that that's the discovery period that we're actually in currently today. So those are my two cents on it. I know that you're looking for some direction from this board. I don't know if you've received what you're looking for, Ms. Smatievich.
Madam Chair, Kayden Smatievich, for the record. I mean, I've heard your comments, and I know that the manager has as well, and so certainly to the degree that we can express those in the discussions with the cities and others as we provide feedback to the senator on the bill, and at the point that it gets heard. I don't know, it is absolutely your choice if you wanted to take an official position on the bill at this point, or just provide direction to staff on the things that you're concerned with in the bill or not in the bill. Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, so on the thing that you did most recently, you were speaking about governance, you're not talking about what I'm going to call the study board.
The study board. I don't want to touch that.
You're not talking about the study board. You think that the structure for the study board is established in section fifteen makes sense. You're talking about the structure of the board that would govern a newly-created County Fire Protection District created under the enabling provisions of the remainder of the bill, that it is your position that because the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners represents all residents of the county, including residents of the two incorporated cities, that it may be a more streamlined approach to just allow the Board of County Commissioners to serve as the governing board for that fire district?
If, yes, if that were, if we were even getting that far, in theory, that's where I feel pretty strongly about that, but I know that there's differing opinions, but I, we already sit as a fire board, we are doing that work every day, and we meet monthly, and in some ways, you could say that the City of Reno and Sparks are looking to create the same structure, and we are an existing board, so that's where I'm at on that. But any other comments from the board? I'm kind of leaning towards direction to staff, but looking to see if there's any other board comments.
I'd like to just, if I may, Madam Chair. I'd, I agree with you. I think some of the best work that we do as a body is the fire board. I think that those are less contentious meetings, I think there's a lot of agreement there, I think we're doing a smooth job on that, and I want to salute the other commissioners for doing that. And so, some of the best work we do, I think. And so, I don't think we need another fire board that would include two cities and two representatives from two cities each, that, in my opinion, my opinion only, don't seem to be doing a very good job with their own cities. Don't come over here and bring that stuff to us. We're doing a good job with what we're doing, and I appreciate what we're doing here, and I don't want to follow somebody that doesn't seem to be doing a good job. Thank you. My opinion.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman?
Do we think that maybe we got the cart before the horse, or one of those kind of situations? And should we keep proceeding with the project that we haven't really thought through?
Well, I think in some ways, what Ms. Smatievich is saying is that the first part of this bill is something we are doing right now. So for us to, I mean, I disagree with other elements of the bill, because I think that, I'm with you, I think there is, we need to do some digging and some thoughtful deliberation and put some time into this, and so that's, but I don't differ with item fifteen, and I actually think that it creates a structure that I had been hearing from the other cities, they wanted this kind of board to be created. This creates a structure for this board to be created. It allows us to go to the legislature, say whether this should proceed or not. It allows us to, you know, see what the costs are, and if Commissioner Clark is correct, if it's same service, more money, I mean, that doesn't sound like something that's appetizing for anyone. So that's where I kind of sit on it, but if you disagree.
Well, we might just be wasting the legislature's time.
I think they want their time to be wasted on this. Not wasted, but they think they want to do this. But go on.
You know, only so many bills are going to get heard. And we have a lot of doubt, I can hear that in everybody's voice today, that we may be on a lost venture here. And should we maybe do more homework on this, maybe the next legislature be more prepared?
I mean, I don't, I do not disagree with that idea, but in some ways, this is what is sitting in front of us, and
I know, it got rushed.
Yeah, and what is being asked to be contemplated, and I think that there is an idea that, really what I see this bill is saying is, I want you to go do a study and report back to me in '27. That's what I see in this bill. I think there are other elements of this bill that could be recommended for changes, and if you want, Ms. Smatievich, perhaps this board needs to say, this bill should have a built-in BDR to come back and ask for those changes. I mean, we do have two BDRs. The problem with the cities in using theirs is that they have a charter committee that tells them what to do, so they have a different structure than we do, but
There's something else. Right now, we have control. Would we still have control?
Here's the one thing I was talking to Manager Brown and the team about, in conjunction with this with this legislation and just in general, the two cities are in trouble. I don't disagree. I disagree as to why they're in trouble, but we don't need to even have that debate because we're not agendized for that, and we don't need to figure that out as the county. But the issue is, if the cities are insolvent, the county still has to do some work to help them. That's how this, the government agencies are kind of set up. So I do think we do need to look at this issue and see if this is the issue. If this is not the issue, we need to say what the real issue is and see how we can support, you know, sustainable governance in our jurisdictions, in our regions. So that, that's kind of where I'm leaning towards, but I hear what you're saying.
I still say.
Yeah.
I don't think we're prepared to, to put Ms. Matiavich into this situation. We were giving, we're giving her a very hard job. I mean, it's way beyond the call of duty, almost, so, in my opinion, so.
And it looks like, do you have anything, DA Kanderas?
So, Madam Chair, Mary Kanderas, for the record, as I look at section 15, it is, and you've called it the study board, it is, if that passes, then the creation of that board is mandatory. And it has certain topics that are mandatory. So that, I think, because there's a lot, we're talking about a lot of things here, is maybe the first issue to give Ms. Matiavich direction on. Of course, it's up to the board, but really, it's, once you have that study board, then you have to study it. And that's just something that you guys are also doing right now. So that's, I think, maybe a place to start with Ms. Matiavich. And like I said, it's up to you guys, but that's really the crux of this bill.
That's what I'm zeroing in on as well. Any other board comments?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I've got a couple of sayings that I think people should keep in mind. Follow the money is the first one, and haste makes waste. Here, we've got a situation where usually we're slower than an iceberg running uphill in January, as they always say, the speed of government. But yet now, we want to go at lightning speed to move this forward. Also, the chair said that, Mike Clark said the cost. When it's my opinion, I'll say it's my opinion, but I talked to the subject, in my opinion, the subject matter experts, the former excellent fire chief that we had. The day that he retired, I happened to be there having a meeting with Chief Ray about this, and he shook my hand when he left the building and said, "Don't let him do it." Okay? So let's get a subject matter expert instead of, let's face it, we're, none of us are qualified firefighters up here. We don't really understand how that works. So I'm going to defer to people who know what they're talking about. Both acting and interim chief, interim chief and former permanent chief, both are absolutely against this. So again, when I ask to talk to the assessor and the treasurer and the clerk, we should also talk to our subject matter experts. We should also talk to our firefighters, the rank-and-file people about this, and get some, get some real feedback before we go. Haste makes waste. When you move fast in government, you're already asking for a BDR to fix it the next time. We know that that's how legislation happens. Somebody comes up with an idea, and they don't understand the unintended consequences, and the next thing you know, we're going back there to try and patch it up again. That's, look through the Nevada revised statutes and see how many times everything's got to get tweaked. Do it right the first time. Let's study it a little bit more. Haste makes waste. Getting something done in a couple of weeks in a government is, it just, it just doesn't happen, and good things don't happen when that happens. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments before we open it up to public comment? I'm not seeing any. So Madam Clerk?
We have Penny Brock signed in.
Penny Brock, for the record, how could I pass this one up when it deals with money? SB 319 is an unfunded mandate. This is to be decided at the local level. Why is Senator Daley taking it to the state legislature? For them to interfere in what is local control? Our taxpayers don't even know about it. As was mentioned, if they knew about it, I'm sure the chambers would be full today. So as a taxpayer, I would like to ask you to, that Ms. Matiavich takes back to Senator Daley to pull the bill even. It's too early. The other thing happening, there are many bills in the legislature being introduced, being heard, that deal with elections. They've heard several bad election bills so far. Last Thursday, the Las Vegas delegation brought forward AB 208. This is for an increase in the number of ballot drop boxes to be put in each county. It was on mandated how many the rural counties would have, but for Clark County, the bill asked for 10 drop boxes in Clark County and five in Washoe County. Well, I applauded the Democrat Assemblywoman that asked Senator Jaeger, who was proudly presenting this bill, "How did you arrive at the numbers of 10 and 5?" And he said, "Oh, I didn't have any evidence. I just pulled the numbers out of the air." This is not right. I would ask that the commissioners ask Ms. Matiavich to at least sit in on the hearing of AB 208, but make a recommendation that Washoe County Commissioners do not support this bill. Another one that was introduced, and I don't have the bill number, but it was that the Secretary of State would take over our ROV. The reason is because there's no one to take charge if something happens to the ROV. In my comments, I said, "Well, that is taken care of. We've got an assistant. We've got our county manager. We've got all kinds of people." So again, that is a bad election bill, taking away local control and being mandated. This is more state control of our elections. Our elections should be decided by our county commissioners at the local level. So I am monitoring these election bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Any other comments for Ms. Matiavich or comments from the board? I'm not seeing any, and are you as clear as mud, Ms. Matiavich? Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time today. We're going to take a very short break, and I know we have two first readings, and we still have our public hearing. We will be back at 1:30. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We will see you in a half hour.
Okay, it is 1:32. I will call back to order this Board of Accounting Commissioners meeting. And we will start with item 14, and I will ask Madam Clerk to help us with that.
This will be bill number 1925, which amends Washoe County Code Chapter 110 Development Code to add middle housing use types, multifamily, minor, guest quarters, and employee housing, and regulate those use types, and to update regulations related to allowing residential uses, accessory uses, and structures, lot coverage, regulatory zone development standards, common open space developments, parking minimums, alleyways, alleyway standards, landscaping exemptions, residential common open space standards, and various definitions as outlined in the staff reports.
Thank you very much. And I know there have been some changes since the last time that this board heard this, so perhaps a quick staff report on this.
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning for the Record. Did you want the full presentation or just a focused look at those changes since last time?
I'm more focused on the changes, but if folks want the full presentation, nope, not seeing, do y'all want the full presentation over here? Nope. Okay, then just if you could focus on the changes, that would be great.
Great. Again, Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning for the Record. So, yes, you guys did see a first reading for Housing Package 2.5A before, and we did discontinue pursuing that ordinance in order to make these changes to the language. And really, these changes are about increasing the clarity and enforceability of the regulation. You can see, I can just go through them really quickly. An update to the guest quarters definition to make sure we weren't accidentally including accessory structures that are not intended, are not going to be used as a living space, making sure we're specifying the maximum square footage for a guest quarters in all cases, making sure that our definition of employee housing is clear that it is housing provided for compensation rather than pouting that can also be paid for, be rented. Adding some additional code standards for, a code standard for employee housing to require a deed restriction to limit the use of that housing to make sure that we can track and enforce over time. Also adding some code standards, just establishing the process for identifying what the common open space for employee housing will be composed of when there is not a special use permit required. And that change was necessary specifically because employee housing is currently allowed under the name bunkhouse by right in the high desert planning area, so we wanted to make sure we were capturing that process as well. And then some various typographical errors and things of that nature. So, really, all of these changes focused on the clarity of the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board on this update? I'm not seeing any. Then, Madam Clerk, if we could please have some public comment?
First signed in is Pat Davison, followed by Matthew Chutter.
Hello again, Chair Hill and Commissioners. My name is Pat Davison. Thanks for this opportunity to talk about something near and dear to my heart, which is housing. It feels like we've been on a long road trip, and we're sitting in the rest area, stretching our legs, and checking our GPS. And I'm the kid whining in the backseat, "Are we there yet?" No, we aren't there yet, but at least we know we're on the right track. I want to commend staff for the improvements made to this package over the last four months. I especially liked that master table. Six tables were taken and combined into one, so easy to see what applies where. So I want to publicly thank and commend Kat and Chris. What I'm looking forward to as we get back on the road, so to speak, will be identifying ways to help first-time home buyers get into the housing stream, whether it's a revolving fund that provides down payment assistance, or other mechanism that makes home ownership possible. Another hope would be that we utilize the expertise and connections of groups like EDON and the Nevada Housing Coalition. You heard from their reps at your January 28 workshop, what a dynamic duo. Those guys are your allies to find developers who like these code changes and can deliver the diverse housing types for rent, plus the entry-level starter homes that Commissioner Clark has always talked about. So that's it. I urge your strong support for the package of changes. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Matthew Chutter, followed by Melody Shelton.
Commissioners, Matt Chutter here for the record. Once again, I object to multiple provisions of Agenda Item 14. As a homeowner in Spanish Springs, I oppose mechanisms to encourage any of the following: dispersed cottage court developments within single-family neighborhoods; employee housing except for remote rural employers; the so-called missing middle housing, which has historically been missing because it's been unwanted and incompatible with many of the rural and suburban surrounding neighborhoods. Many of us moved here because we precisely do not want what this region is morphing into: high-density, urban, and homogeneous, lacking neighborhoods with distinct personality, character, and diversity. I oppose the goal of imposition of affordable, i.e. higher-density housing by another name, within neighborhoods where it does not fit. Therefore, I oppose the mechanisms to implement it. Affordable is a euphemism for small units mostly clustered on a given property, individual yards to be replaced with community dog walks. Lovely. Agenda Item 14 is symptomatic of refusal by county planners to operate within and accept the areas' inherent real resource limitations. Instead, we hear a series of myths which conflict with what we can see with our own eyes. We're told there's plenty of water, just not so much that we can water our lawns more than every other day. We're told not to worry, infrastructure planners have everything under control, while toll roads are suddenly necessary, but no reduction in outrageously high gas taxes planned, given that we'll soon be paying to travel on those private toll roads. We're sure that police resources are adequate for the planned growth as we drive past newly-tagged structures being passed by mostly the new motors who regard the perpetual construction speeds as suggestions since they're frequently enforced as our neighbors are burglarized. The mayor of Sparks tells us in a TV interview that Sparks' growth is resulting in government costs outstripping revenue as the county charges full steam ahead to replicate this budget problem countywide. Emergency planning seems to be an afterthought. Within the last week, a major three-car accident shut down the single north-south interstate traffic artery. You might have thought I did, that dozens of vehicles were involved, but a single one, actually. Further, county planners seem not to understand what road improvements often encourage congestion through resulting development, not make it disappear. Smog now chronically blankets the valley despite the need of motorists to ritualistically pay their increasingly clean tailpipes checked and given the official stamp of approval to drive on roads we pay for. The problem is overpopulation. It's ruining our quality of life. Respectfully, you are eagerly overseeing this mess, and you need to fix it first. Thank you.
Thank you. Melody Shelton.
I didn't have my, Melody Chutter for the record, I didn't have my printout, so I'm just going to do the best I can. Basically, somebody on the Commissioner says, "Oh, I just don't see it. I don't see it." Just because you live where you want to live, you're forcing your way of life onto us. We moved out to where we wanted to live because we don't want the same where you live, okay? You guys have not, we've been talking, we come here, we speak, we've had a number of people, we even had an attorney, and there's a lot of people where we moved to, but we're not being paid attention. It's like, doesn't matter what we say, it doesn't matter the time that we spend here, you just go through the motions, listen to what you do, and then you do what you want. Well, all this is going to backfire, just like what's happening now, the major traffics, the crime, and everything else. Who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers, because all you come up with, "We need to get more money out of these people. This is why you have homeless. We need to get more money out of these people. This is why people are losing houses. This is why insurance is going up," because you keep allowing people to come in and cluster to the point that we are like pack rats. To the point, when you put too much rats in a cage and they have no room to breathe, what happens? You get all the criminals and the activities and everything that's going on. You can ignore it, but it's going to backfire. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looking for additional board comments on this? Not seeing any. Okay, we have, this is a first reading. We've heard our public comment and the staff report on changes, so I will make the motion to introduce and conduct a first reading of Bill Number 1925, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 110 by modifying Division 349 in order to add middle housing types, multifamily, minor, guest quarters, and employee housing, and regulate those use types as outlined in the staff report. And we will schedule a public hearing for the second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance on April 8, 2025. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 15. And that is also Madam Clerk.
This is a first reading. It will be Bill Number 1926, which amends Washoe County Code Chapter 110 by revising provisions related to final subdivision maps as outlined in the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have a staff report on this item? It looks like Mr. Lloyd is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building. I'll just briefly run through some of these changes. This is a package of proposed amendments. Really, it's a cleanup to Article 610, our final subdivision maps. Feel that this is certainly needed, as the last amendment occurred in 2010, but quite frankly, most of this language was active back in the mid-'90s. So just some of the, if I can walk through, just some of the more substantive changes to this draft amendment. We're proposing that each final subdivision map include a minimum of five lots, that we add a requirement for a water supplier certificate, if it includes a GID, increase the days for submission of a final map from 60 days to 120 days, to clarify the timing requirements for the presentation of a final map and the cleanup and corrections to a number of the provisions within 610. Starting with the five-lot minimum, the proposal is to establish a minimum. Currently, that doesn't exist. This will be consistent with the five-lot minimum required for a tentative subdivision map. And also, we wanted to provide clarity in terms of what lot constitutes, or is part of that five-lot calculation, that we would not include common area roadway, utility parcels, et cetera, towards that calculation. The requirement for a certificate from a water supplier, if that supplier is a general improvement district, this mirrors the requirements per NRS. To increase the number of days for submission of a final map, currently, we require that the final map be submitted 60 days prior to the expiration of the map. We would extend this out 120 days, which is far more necessary, given the timeline that it takes for review, corrections, and then the resubmital. 160 days is far more applicable in this case. Really, the primary reason for this submission is to clarify the deadlines for the ultimate recordation of a map. Using the state language of presentation of a final map, I know that that was causing some confusion with staff and also with the development community. So there's, we spent the most amount of time drafting language to provide clarity for what that means, the presentation date, as the date for the final map to be presented for signature to the Director of Planning and Development, which is the last signature required for a final map. And finally, there's a number of corrections and additions, correcting agencies' names that no longer exist, or titles of officers that have since changed, removing the requirement for a phasing plan, drafting changes that will avoid confusion regarding the term present, as we had discussed, and also providing some clarification with financial assurance documents in lieu of performance bonds. There was a workshop that was held on December 18. We had a total of 31 attendees. There were some concerns raised. They were pretty minor, and as a result, we made some changes to the draft in front of you. And since the changes have been made, or the issues have been clarified, really, we have not heard any concerns or issues from any of the community that were in attendance. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended adoption of this draft ordinance at their February 4 meeting, subject to all four of the required findings of code. And with that, staff offers the following motion for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, and I commend you and the team, because we're seeing a lot of these kind of cleanup items come before the board, and I know it takes a lot of work to comb through old ordinances, but clarifying things is really important for the staff and also for applicants. So thank you for taking the time to bring this to us. Looking to board comments, questions? Not seeing any. Okay, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay, I will read this into the record for the first reading, then. Move to introduce and conduct the first reading of Bill Number 1926, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 Development Code, Article 610, Final Subdivision Maps, to modify various sections in order to clarify requirements related to final subdivision maps as outlined in the staff report. Further, to schedule a public hearing for the second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance for April 8, 2025. All right. With that, we will now move into our public hearing. I will open our public hearing for item 16, and Manager Brown, if you'll help us with that.
Hello. Item 16 is a public hearing to consider objections to Resolution R. 25-23 declaring Washoe County's intent to convey to Truckee Meadows Water Authority a joint powers authority entity created pursuant to a cooperative agreement among the cities of Reno, Nevada, Sparks, Nevada, and Washoe County, Nevada pursuant to NRS Chapter 277, approximately 479.774 acres of land, commonly known as American Flats, APN 079-332-37, and Z079-332-36, without consideration as authorized in NRS 244.284. The conveyance benefits the public by contributing to the One Water Nevada Advanced Purified Water Facility, an initiative approach to diversifying the region's water supply, and possible action to approve a great bargain and sale deed with possibility of reverter conveying American Flats, APN 079-332-37, and 079-332-36, without consideration as authorized in NRS 244.284 for Tamwa. And number three, possible action to approve an assignment and assumption of agreement with the County of Washoe and the City of Reno, Swan Lake Land Applications American Flat Road Site, assigning Washoe County's rights to Tamwa. And number four, authorize the county manager to execute any and all required documents necessary for the property transfer.
Thank you very much. And do we have a staff report on this? Hello?
Good afternoon. For the record, Aaron Smith, Division Director of Operations. I am here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as representatives from the City of Reno and Truckee Meadows Water Authority.
Okay, looking to the board to see if there's any questions on this item. I'm not seeing any. I guess, I know that the Bureau of Reclamation gave a large grant to this project, and I was just curious if the money's in hand for One Water Nevada, is that correct?
I believe our representatives may be able to speak to that better than our
I just want to make sure that we got the cash.
Your question is about the facility and bringing that to fruition.
Exactly.
For the record, Dustin Waters, City of Reno, Assistant Director of Utility Services Department. For the grant, yes, it has been assigned to this project, $30 million from the Bureau of Reclamation, but due to the federal uncertainties on funding, it is kind of up in the air at the moment. We have received positive comments that it will come through. We just aren't aware of the timing right now, so the time is a little uncertain. So I think the next step, at the end of this month, is do's review.
Okay.
So the timing is uncertain, but we do, we have positive comments that it should come through.
Okay.
But we just don't know for sure yet.
Good to hear. Yeah, I was curious about that, so thank you for the clarification. Any other board comments? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay. We have done board comments, opened up public comments. Any other comments before a motion is done here? Not seeing any. Okay. And I'm happy to make the motion. Move to declare Washoe County's intent to convey the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, a joint powers authority entitled to create, entity created pursuant to a cooperative agreement among the cities of Reno, Nevada, Sparks, Nevada, and Washoe County, Nevada pursuant to NRS 277, approximately 479.774 acres of land, commonly known as American Flats, without consideration as authorized in NRS 244.284. And let's see, authorize the manager to, as outlined in the staff report, and authorize the county manager to execute any or all required documents necessary for the property transfer. And I am looking for a second. Thank you. Commissioner Garcia, we have a motion in a second. Any questions on that from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's up on your screen. And Commissioner Clark, you're right in time to vote for item 16. Good timing, perfect. All right, has everyone, there we go. All right, the motion passes, three to one, with Vice Chair Herman in the negative. Thank you very much. We're now going to move into item 17, our final public comment. Manager Brown.
Item 17 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment under individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
There is nobody signed in.
Okay. We will now move into item 18, Manager Brown.
Item 18 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Anything else for us, Manager Brown?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman, and Commissioner Garcia, and Commissioner Clark. Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.
No, no, I have a comment.
Oh, you do?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
A couple of quick comments.
Yes, go, go, go.
So we get the heck out of here. I just want to give a shout out to Nico from our town Reno. He's done a great job reporting a lot of things that are happening in the community. I guess he's been attacked by certain people for some of his articles. He's not always been a friend of mine in the articles, but he's always treated me fairly, so I don't like to see anybody get called out for reporting. Next, I want to talk about a rally tonight in Carson City. I'll be attending. It's the folks that are against making public records harder to come by. So it'll be held at the Brewery Arts Center tonight at 6 to 8, and I encourage anybody who's interested in public records and wants easier access to public records to attend this rally. And last, you know, well, again, on the same topic, you know, support making public records easier to come by. Let's face it, the name of public records is public records, and the public should have access to the records. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioner comments? Not seeing any. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting.